Okay, are we all ready to start? Great. I hereby call the Planning Commission meeting of April 20th, 2015 to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vaterlaus.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Cooper.
Present.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
We have five commissioners present and a quorum. Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you very much. And for a salute to the flag, could we be led by Commissioner Vaterlaus?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the administrative business. Do I see a motion to approve the order of agenda? Yes, I do. Commissioner Cooper.
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
And do I have a second? Commissioner Vaterlaus.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Can we do that one more time, please, Mr. Chair?
Sure, let's do a revote. And that motion passes, five to zero. Moving on to the approval of minutes, oh, we've got two sets of minutes, correct? From March 16th and April 6th. Do we have a quorum to approve the March 16th minutes?
Is it here?
Here.
Let's see. Does anyone... Do we have a quorum to approve the March 16th minutes?
I don't think so. Yes, we have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Because I think I was absent?
We have Commissioners Cooper, Campbell, Nebelen... Pardon me, no, we only have two.
No, we don't have enough.
Oh, okay.
Pardon the mistake, we don't have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, so we will table that for another day. Moving on to the April 6th, 2015 minutes. I assume we have a quorum for that. Let's see, one, two, three, four.
We do have a quorum for that one. Four Commissioners present.
Four, great, okay. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Cooper.
I move to approve the minutes of April 6th.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Vaterlaus.
Second.
Great, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion passes four to zero. Okay. Clearing up administrative business.
Just note, I guess it's obvious, but I did abstain because I wasn't at that meeting.
Very good, Commissioner Nebelen. Thank you for noting that. Next, is there a need for a designation of a liaison to the next city council meeting?
No, there's not.
Great, thank you very much. So we are moving on to the public hearing. We've got two matters for the public hearing. The first one is use permit UP-040-14 filed by Noel DeWes of the Spindrift School of Performing Arts to demolish an existing outdoor restroom building and install nine trailers to create a 105-foot-by-3-inch... I'm sorry, 105-foot, 3-inch-by-63-foot combined classroom building to conduct theater and dance classes at the upper level of Otstad Park, 1050 Cresby Drive. Recommended sequoia status is a categorical exemption, and the proposed action is to approve as condition. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. Christian Murdock, Assistant Planner with the Planning Department. As described, we have an application from the Spindrift School of Performing Arts that is completely compliant with the city's zoning standards, except that it requires a use permit to commence a school use within the R1 Single Family District. The commission's items for action this evening are to make a determination on the appropriateness of the use permit, and also to determine whether or not the project is exempt, categorically exempt, from the California Environmental Quality Act. This is a project that staff feels will be a positive for Otstad Park. It will increase the utilization of positive activities in that location. And this item, not this item particularly, but the use in general also, has already received approval from the city council for a lease for an initial period of 10 years, with an option to renew for another 10 years. So overall, staff is very supportive of this application, and believes the applicant is here to answer any questions on particular operations to the school.
Great, thank you very much for that staff report. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I am going to invite the applicant up to speak if she wishes. You've got 10 minutes to address the commission. Just to begin by stating your name.
Great, thank you, Commissioners. My name's Noel DeWes. I'm the Executive Director of the Spindrift School of Performing Arts. We have been in business for 21 years in Pacifica. I've been Executive Director for 17 of those 21 years. And, you know, when people... I actually don't live in Pacifica. I live in the town that I grew up in. And when people ask me, "Oh, where do you work?" I'm like, you know, "It's this funky little beach town right south of San Francisco." And it's a really great, close-knit community of people that really support children in the arts. And Pacifica has been the perfect home for SSPA in the last 21 years. And it's helped us support our mission of training and inspiring children of all ages in the performing arts while instilling qualities of confidence, self-discipline, creativity, and respect for others. We, as I mentioned, are a nonprofit in town. We are located at 1050 Cresby Drive. We also have a bunch of other locations. We have two dance studios located at the old Otstad School. We also have a very extensive outreach program. We offer a bunch of our classes at every public school in Pacifica. And also some public and private schools in Daly City. We service about 2,000 children annually in our community through mostly our outreach programs. In addition, we offer 10 summer camps throughout the summer. Most of those are offered at the local school locations. We have made it our mission to make sure that children are receiving performing arts education and exposure that's lacking in the public school curriculum. And we've built a partnership with the Pacifica School District over the last 15 years to ensure that children in Pacifica are getting exposed to dance, music, and theater with a concentrated effort in our local Title I schools, where those opportunities and access to enrichment activities are at its least. As you well know, and maybe you've experienced it yourself as young children, and Mr. Duncan, U.S. Secretary of Education, says that the arts significantly boost achievement, reduce discipline problems, and increase the odds students... and increase the odds students will go on to graduate school and college. Our First Lady, Michelle Obama, sums it up, along with Mr. Obama, that the arts... they strongly believe that arts education is essential for building innovative thinkers who will be our nation's leaders for tomorrow. Our project, only about 20% of the 2,000 children that we serve annually take classes at our own locations, at 1050 Cresby Drive and at Otstad. We're in need of adequate space for rehearsal and performances for our young artists, and that's why we're embarking on this project tonight. This new building that we propose to you tonight will help our young artists excel in programs that they're participating in right now. We have flexibility in our hours of operation in this new building. We will still reside in our outreach locations, all eight local public schools, as well as our Otstad dance studios at the old Otstad School location. And we are also planning on still residing at our 1050 Cresby Drive Theater location, a space shared by another local business, PSP, the Pacifica Spindrift Players, an adult community theater group. For the past 21 years, we've shared that space. Our new space will have five private music rooms, hopefully, one office, three classrooms, of which two of those will be dance studios, and one will be a theater classroom slash informal theater space for private music recitals and end-of-session showings, an informal theater space, as well as storage. We've been working on this project with the city for the last three years. City Council has approved a land lease for the land, and now we're looking for your approval on the building. In addition, over the last 21 years, we've set aside funds to build a space of our own, and more recently, a lot of time and effort and resources in making sure that this building fits your guidelines and standards, as well as our own. Mr. Murdock has prepared a thorough report for you tonight documenting the details of our project, and how they satisfy all zoning regulations and standards, and how they will be consistent with your general plan. City Council has approved our land lease and sees this project as a positive improvement to the park and our community. I hope, without much delay, you concur. But more importantly, that you understand the critical role that arts play in stimulating creativity and in developing vital communities. We look forward to more space so that everyone, young artists, community partners, and SSPA can continue what we love to do and prosper. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Just stay up there for one sec. Are there any questions from the Commissioners for the applicant? That is Commissioner Nebelen or Cooper? Commissioner Cooper.
I have a question, a couple of questions for you. First of all, I'd like to recommend that everybody take a class at Spindrift. I know my kids have, and I really appreciate the facility and what you guys provide, so that's wonderful.
Thank you.
The question and concern I have is that, you know, having been to this building several times, is when you have performances, there tends to be quite a bit of traffic in the area. And my concern is necessarily is how to get from that lower parking lot to the upper parking lot. Are you planning to rebuild those stairs that are... that service that area?
That's not part of our proposal that you're looking at tonight. However, that has been a concern of ours as well. And if you look inside your packets, we've come up with some parking and traffic solutions. And in that, we do realize that we are the ones that are proposing change in the park. And because we share that space with the Pacifica Spindrift Players, that has, you know, been brought to our attention, and has been our concerns as well. Obviously, we don't want our public to be impacted by parking just as much as anybody else's public. So what we currently do right now is we share a calendar, and we basically work around their season. And because we have so many other locations in town, that creates some flexibility. I mean, obviously, you know, we still want to have, you know, classes at certain times, which tends to be between 3:00 and 7:00 in the afternoon, well before they have rehearsals Monday through Friday. And then, every now and then, we'll be needing to do some sort of informal performance in our informal performance space, but I think with... I think we can work around their schedule.
Yeah, I think that I don't really have a concern about the adequacy of parking. It's really the safe travel from the lower parking lot to the upper parking lot, and getting off those roadways when people are coming down, so...
So currently...
I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that I would like to see that as a request to the Parks and Rec Department to maybe redo those stairs and put some lighting. And so there is a safe path of travel from the lower parking lot to the upper parking lot.
That would be great. We would love that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. If there are no other questions for the applicant, so what's going to happen is, we're going to open the public hearing, and people have three minutes to speak on the topic. And after that, we'll call you back up, and you'll have three minutes to respond if you feel like it's necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak on this agenda item should fill out one of these cards and hand it in to our staff over here. And I've got two cards from Derek Burns and Tom Nolan. So Derek, why don't you start, if you're here? And then we'll have Tom Nolan speak. You can just state your name for the record, and you've got three minutes to speak.
And you'll hear a brief tone at 30 seconds.
What's that?
You'll hear a brief tone with 30 seconds remaining.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm Derek Burns, and I just would like to speak a little bit about why youth arts are so important, and the expansion is so important to our town. I'm not a... I'm not a... I don't call myself a local. I wasn't born here. I think you kind of have to be born in Pacifica to call yourself a local, but I've noticed a lot in the last 16 years. And one of the things I've noticed is the abundance of artists of all types, physical dancers, painters, singers, musicians. And it was a great part of moving here, discovering all this art community that I didn't really know, pardon me, existed. The other thing I noticed was cooperation. There were conflicts and struggles over Maury Point and Pedro Point, and redoing beaches, and, you know, all sorts of things. And I watched the town battle and then work together over and over and over again. And I think that the... that's appealing. It's an appealing part of this town. And so, you know, the other thing you notice is the families. The beauty of this town is it's so wonderful to raise families here because of the nature, but also because of the schools, the community center, and the resources the city provides, sports groups, and arts groups. And the arts education, because the schools don't have the resources, it's so important to offer these for the reasons that Noel mentioned, but also for the enrichment and the confidence building. I see parents in this room, and know scores of parents that could say how much Spindrift has done to bring their kids into young adulthood. And you'll probably hear from, you know, people all over town that can speak to this. The role modeling and mentorship, as the parent of two daughters... I have two very strong daughters who are very capable as a direct result of Noel and Natalia, and, pardon me, the other teachers that they encountered. The outreach to the kids who would not have any access to art at all is really crucial. And this expansion of space will allow the classes and the breadth of classes to expand, and also to continue to feed young artists into the Pacifica Spindrift Player Program. You'll see a lot of crossover over the years. As students grow and become young adults, the community theater is just so important. And so, starting from kindergarten all the way through adult theater, part of what's always appealed to me is the level of arts and commitments to the outdoors that Pacificans share. So that's my input, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Oh, I just got 11 more cards to speak on this topic, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to call three names at a time, so you've got a little advanced warning. So we're going to have Tom Nolan, followed by... I apologize for mispronouncing names. Chris Yakaby, and followed by Gary Pugh Newman.
Good evening. My name is Tom Nolan, and I live at 1259 Cresby Drive, directly behind and above the proposed project, which makes me a neighbor to the project. I strongly urge you to approve the project as conditioned. I have two children, a boy and a girl, who have been students at Spindrift for the past three years. This has given my wife and I numerous opportunities to witness the magical work that this school produces. Children who may have had little to no experience in the arts are given the instruction to allow them to open a new portal within themselves. This is accomplished primarily through the efforts of a dedicated, hard-working teaching and support staff. It is truly for these folks a labor of love. We, as parents and members of this community, get to then participate in enjoying the fruits of this labor by seeing these kids perform and invariably shine. Spindrift has the staffing to accomplish this noble work. What they don't have is a place to do it. The portables at Otstad School are where, at present, the majority of the dance classes are held, as well as the theater prep classes. My wife reminded me yesterday that she attended Otstad School 42 years ago. If you have visited the site recently, you would see that not much has changed. The portables are small and have inadequate heating. If the children need to use the restroom, they have to leave the portables and navigate their way through the school to get to the restrooms. This isn't the way it should be. For too long, Spindrift has accomplished so much with so little. A first-class organization, especially one that is undertaking the invaluable role of helping us grow our children, should and needs to have a place to call its own. Studios, music rooms, offices, classrooms, an informal performance space, and yes, bathrooms, all under one roof. In addition, our children deserve a facility that matches their excitement and enthusiasm with an environment that is state-of-the-art. Spindrift recognized this need and started this process to accomplish this very task. Spindrift has gone to the community to ask for assistance in raising the funds to build this project, and the community is responding. We, as member of that community, now in turn are asking the city, and therefore you as Planning Commissioners, to turn... do its part and allow this project to come to fruition. Once again, I strongly urge you to approve the project as conditioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Chris Yakaby. I'm sure I'm mispronouncing your last name. I apologize in advance.
I actually pronounced it just right. Good job. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council for allowing us to speak on this issue. My name is Chris Yakaby, and I live on Barcelona Drive, which is directly adjacent to the park. And I am a supporter of the arts, along with my children. The... I have to admit, I'm coming into this late in the process, so that is my own fault. And the only concerns I have are if alternate locations have been looked at for this facility. It seems to me that there's a lot of empty buildings in Pacifica, and some that are even becoming available as we speak in Lindemar Shopping Center, in the Fresh and Easy Shopping Center, just to name a few. I realize they're commercial properties, but I wonder how many other properties around the city are vacant and could possibly be used for this purpose. They've already stated that there are other alternate locations. I forget how many they have. But, you know, adding another location that's already existing would preclude building a new facility, upgrading the infrastructure, along with the associated costs of putting in new bathrooms, new plumbing, electricity. And then, there's also concerns of traffic in the local area up Cresby Drive. We already have, you know, a lot of residential traffic, and I'm not sure if studies have been done, or if there's any consideration to the increase in traffic. There was a mention earlier about parking considerations, and I'm not sure how many people they plan to bring in on a daily basis, and, you know, what... if they've actually analyzed the parking situation, if that's going to spill into Cresby or other neighboring streets. So again, it's really, I mean, I'm not opposed to the project individually, and I do think it's a good project. Whether or not it should be located in the park, I'm just not sure. You know, I'd like to see if alternate locations have been looked at, existing buildings. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So Gary Pugh Newman, and after that, Kevin Kuba, and Sophie Green.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak at this time. I am currently the President of the Board at Pacifica Spindrift Players. Strange, they've been around two years longer than I was born, so... But I am responsible for the continuation of this, I don't know, it's been around for a long time, so it's my responsibility to see that it survives. We survive off of having shows at our theater. We are the leaseholder. We pay the city the lease for the building. And we kind of took it over. There was other groups there at the time, but it eventually ended up in our laps. 20 years ago, the school started with two musicians and a tap dancer. It has grown. I have approved... I believe we need arts in the school. I'm an actor myself. It has done wonders for me. My two children attended many classes at Spindrift Theater. I do not oppose that. I don't think anybody in our board opposes the fact that we need the school in the building, in the area. The thing that my board is having a problem with is the black box theater. Back in 2012, they brought to the board, when Henry Sulenthal was the President of the Board, three classrooms. The Board at that time approved the three classrooms. The problem we're having now is that we see that we have 100-seat black box theater. Well, at least, that's what they're advertising when they're raising money through their... they're sending out, you know, support from the community and all, and it lists that it's 100-seat theater. There's already 100-seat theater on the property, and like I said before, this is the only way we can raise money and to keep afloat. We've been subleasing to the school. They pretty much help us pay for half of what we pay every month to the city to lease the building. With them putting out the new building out there, we're going to have to increase what we do with the use of the building. The parking situation is very difficult. If we do a large musical, we have 20 people in the cast, there's 20 cars. If one person comes to see those, there's 40 cars in the building, in the parking lot. That already exceeds the parking and the level up above. We add recitals, whatever's going on in the black box theater. I know myself, if I had a black box theater, I'd be using that thing all the time, just because it's a black box theater. The gentleman who spoke before me, I wonder if we have checked around the area. They already have use at Otstad. I know Otstad has a special needs school there right now, but it actually has a theater in there. It has classrooms. It has things that can be developed into its own school, and I think they would have plenty of room there to accomplish what they're doing there. So I think the biggest problem that my board has is the parking situations and having two 100-seat theaters in one property with limited parking. I see my time is up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Kevin Kuba.
Good evening. Thank you, to get my name right. I'm Kevin Kuba. I live on Cresby Drive, very close to the park. So first of all, I wanted to say, we support the performing arts. We like having a theater in the neighborhood. It's not any question about that, or how successful they're being, or why it's important to children in the community. When we're looking at the analyst's report, it seems like there's an oversight. And that has to do with that picnic space, which is the grassy spot where the trailers will be sitting. I checked in the city website, and it does list at Otstad Park, there is a picnic area, and it lists picnic tables and a barbecue and all the rest of those things. And if you've been to Otstad Park, you know it's built in the hills. And so everything above the theater is eucalyptus trees and hilly. And really, the only flat spot in the park is that grassy place. So that's where we go to play frisbee, to walk our dogs, to have a meal outside. Sometimes, yes, at night, we sneak out and watch the stars and things, because it's a dark space to do that. So my primary concern is the elimination of that picnic area in the park, and it is the only neighborhood park within walking distance on Cresby where we are. I think the other concern I have is that the first I heard about this was that mailer that you guys sent to us. And so I opened the envelope, and, you know, we get a lot of those things from the city. And I was kind of surprised to find out what was happening right in our neighborhood behind us. And then to find out that perhaps this has been in the works for years, to only find out two weeks before this discussion is a little concerning to me from that perspective as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sophie Green, and after that, we're going to have Hope Nelson and Margaret. I don't think you wrote your name very well. Lee. There we go.
Can you hear me? Should I...
Pull it down, there you go.
Okay, just checking. Hello, my name is Sophie Green, and I have been training with Spindrift for almost four years now. Before I came to SSPA, I was sort of... I didn't have, like, a goal for my life. I wasn't... I didn't have like a goal for my life, I wasn't striving towards something, I didn't have any burning passions. And I came when I was nine, and I did my first summer camp, and everybody was so nice, and I just... Everybody was so welcoming, and you didn't have to feel self-conscious of yourself for, like, not being able to read very well, or something like that. You didn't have to feel like that, you could just let go of all of that and be with people who were really nice and kind to you, and I had a really good time, and I have ever since. And now, I dream of being on Broadway someday, and Spindrift has been such a big part in all of my passions and just thriving. I am currently in SDC, which is the Spindrift Dance Company. I am playing Marcy Park in Putnam County's 25th Annual Spelling Bee, that the play Spindrift is putting on. I take ballet class, I take point class, I'm in private voice lessons, I just came from dance class, I'm always there. And I really think that us as a company really need better dance and theater space. I know that trying to dance in the very little space we have at Oddstad Studios is very difficult. You want to... When you dance modern, you just want to move, and you want to go as far as you can, and you want to take up the space. And it's also very difficult to have a comparison from when you're actually dancing in a recital on Terranova Stage to when you're dancing in a tiny Oddstad Studio. We can't fit two levels of SDC in that room, you have to walk forever to get to the bathrooms, you have to like navigate yourself around, the doors get stuck, like, it's just a mess over there. I think that the theater, we just, it's been tricky trying to share our theater, I think some issues have been brought up. I mean, I feel like we could have more shows, or, I don't know, but the... I know for a fact that the, like, private vocal studios we have there are very tricky, they're small, and I just think that having a new theater space would benefit both theater companies, and I believe that it would give us the ability and freedom to be the artists we dream of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Sophie. That was pretty cool.
Hello, my name is Hope Nelson, I'm seventeen years old, and I will be speaking on behalf of the Spinder School of Performing Arts. I started at Spindrift when I was four, and I basically grew up there, and it's a really important place to me, and it's helped me, like, find who I want to be, and like, it's given me a career path that I think I can accomplish now that I've had all that training at Spindrift. When I started at Spindrift, it was really small, there was like two summer camps, and now there's like eleven or something. And I think that it's important for us to have a bigger space, because it just keeps growing, because kids get excited, and more people come and want to learn. So I think it's very important for us to have a bigger space, so that more kids can have, like, opportunities that I did, where it just makes you feel like you have somewhere to go in life, and like something to do, and something to be proud of. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Margaret Lee, and followed by Andy Lee, followed by Janine Galagani.
Hello, my name's Margaret Lee, I'm sixteen years old, and I'm a junior at Terranova High School. I've been with Spindrift for twelve years now, and I actually started in one of their outreach classes that Noel was teaching at Ocean Shore School in kindergarten. And you may not be able to tell now, but I suffer from a lot of anxiety, and Spindrift has, doing theater and dance has really brought me out of that. And I've seen Spindrift, being with them for so long, have seen them grow exponentially, to the point where I'm in a show with Sophie right now, and we are rehearsing in a dance studio with thirty people, and our three instructors in a dance studio. We're next door, there's ballet going on, and there's jumping, and we can't fit, and we can't use our set pieces, we have to take our shoes off. Whereas this new facility will allow us to expand and actually explore, and really perform, and get to be one with the characters, and overcome those anxieties, and really discover who you are, which is all what the arts is about. So I strongly suggest you guys pass this, because I know I've benefited so much, and I would love to see the rest of the community benefit the way that I have. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak up here, my name's Andy Lee. I am a sixteen-year-plus resident of Pacifica. I'm a longtime Spindrift School of Performing Arts parent, I am a current board member, but I have been a resident and parent of this program for far, far longer. I would urge you to approve this project as conditioned by your staff. I think you just heard from my daughter, who, and Sophie Green, and Hope, these girls know exactly what it's like to dance and perform and practice in the space that they currently have, which has been inadequate. This new space will give them more than enough space to be able to do the things they need to do effectively to grow as artists. And I think about what you saw these girls who are adolescents and teenagers, and I think about what they were like when they were four, five years old, and I think about the kids now, when I'm watching a dance show, and I see those preschool tappers, who are once my daughter, and thinking about them dancing in that black box space, which will be in the new facility. And remember, that space is really going to be used not for a big theater production, but it is going to be used for recitals. It's going to be used for guitar recitals, for voice recitals, for dance recitals in the afternoon. And I think about those kids who are going to grow up in this new space, and actually have advantages going forward, growing as artists, that my kids didn't have, because they were performing and rehearsing in an old antiquated space such as the Portables at Oddstad. So thank you for your time, I urge you to approve this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Janine Galagani, followed by Gary Smith, and Joan Pugh Newman.
Hello, my name is Janine Galagani. I grew up here in Pacifica. I wish I had Spindrift when I was young, because maybe I wouldn't be so nervous standing here with this big ol' microphone in my face in front of all of you. So I'm going to put that aside and tell you why I think you should support this project. Spindrift held a twentieth anniversary party recently. Who I am is, I'm a parent, I had a business, and I left my business to be with my children and volunteer at the schools. I've watched Spindrift at all of our schools, they have all these after-school outreach programs at each one of our schools, they hold summer camps, those summer camps fill up within the first week of being advertised. So you have to... So there are so... There is such a huge, huge population that wants and needs to be in Spindrift. Spindrift gives scholarships to students that want to be in their programs. So they had a twentieth anniversary party, and they asked me to help them do it, because I have experience in that sort of business. They told me that they were going to expect about three hundred people, and I thought, no way are they going to have three hundred people. Like, everybody is so busy on the weekend. We had well over three hundred people. There were kids, there were grandparents, there were teenagers, there were parents, and they all stayed, and they ate every last morsel of the food that we prepared. I was completely blown away by this. Spindrift has outgrown the spaces they are currently oozing into all over Pacifica. They need to be grounded, and they need this space. I urge you to support it. They will make whatever happen, they are so committed to what they do, they will handle... They have handled an inadequate space, but I urge you to support this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gary Smith, I am a member of the Pacific Spindrift Players. There is no question that the Spindrift School is an important part of Pacifica, and expanded area is needed for them. Reviewing what they have listed here is a hundred-seat black box theater is the concern here. The Spindrift, Pacific Spindrift Players has a hundred-seat theater, and we fill the parking lots when we have a performance. The likelihood of these two theaters competing for parking spaces, traffic, and everything else on a given day is a great concern. I've been told that everything's going to be ended seven, schedules are going to be worked out, but the potential is there, it's a great potential. The infrastructure in that park is not able to support two hundred-seat theaters. It is important that you, as the planning commission, go back and take a look, see the parking, do a parking study, a traffic study, and see if this infrastructure will support these two hundred-seat theaters. This is the biggest concern that I have, as well as the infrastructure. One was the stairs that you've already mentioned, so I don't need to bring that up again. If the parking situation can be mitigated, adding parking spaces, doing something to increase the parking fifty-fold for two theaters operating at the same time, perhaps this would work. I don't see the space for the extra parking, and I believe that in the future, we will find that there will be a major conflict between the two theaters operating at the same time with parking problems in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Pugh Newman, followed by Betsy Zobel.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Joan Pugh Newman. This is an unusual last name, you already heard it mentioned. Gary Pugh Newman is my husband, he's president of the board, I am a board member of Pacifica Spindrift Players. We have supported Spindrift School of Performing Arts for years and years now. Again, it is not a question of not supporting the arts in our community for children and for adults. But the thing to remember here is, we would love the school to have a large space, but the problem here, again, and you've heard it before from the neighbors, and from other board members of Pacifica Spindrift Players, is the concern that that extra space for the school be twenty yards adjacent to this theater building that is already jam-packed, full of activities and things like that. So the concern here is not the support that we have for this entity, the school, but the placement that they propose to put their building. And we would ask that this, that the extra space be granted to the school, but someplace that doesn't interfere with Pacifica Spindrift Players' need to continue as a business, as it has for more than fifty years, and as the leaseholder with the city. We would ask that consideration be given to Pacifica Spindrift Players' needs. We support the school in every sense, except where it is detrimental to Pacifica Spindrift Players, and we believe it is here, in terms of using this facility, just not that big a space, and the parking, where we need to have the parking available for our patrons. And there's no guarantee that that parking will be available for the Pacifica Spindrift Players' shows that are held on weekend evenings and weekend afternoons. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Betsy Zobel is the last speaker on this issue.
Good evening, planning commissioners, my name is Betsy Zobel, I live on Standish Road in Pacifica. I have three children who are now young adults, all of them were involved in Spindrift programs growing up here in Pacifica, and I believe the school has truly touched their lives. They're young adults now, but they're still playing their violins and dancing and trying to get in shows, and I believe the seeds of that was really planted by Spindrift School of the Performing Arts. I'm also a patron of Pacifica Spindrift Player Productions. I probably saw about half their shows last year, and I love having a local theater, I like having it right here in town and not having to go to the city, and I think they do excellent work. I also like being able to walk to a show sometimes, it's just great. About twenty months ago, I joined the board of Spindrift, I'm currently the board treasurer. And since I joined the board, Spindrift School of the Performing Arts Board, since I joined the board, we have devoted enormous staff and board time into trying to find expansion space, because we really need it, our enrollments are growing. We've searched and evaluated dozens of sites around town, and have found consistently that they're either cost prohibitive, or they don't offer a stable location. Considerable investment has to be made into putting a school in a site, and in most of the cases we've looked at, either it's too expensive, or they can only really offer no more than fifteen months, or both. I don't think I have to tell you that real estate in San Mateo County is at an extreme premium. In my work in local government, we are frequently approached by cultural organizations and educational organizations and nonprofits looking for space, and it is very, very challenging. My personal observation is that in order to survive, nonprofit organizations need to find ways to collaborate and share space. They need to realize they're not necessarily competing, and I believe truly that through careful planning and cooperation, Spindrift School of the Performing Arts and PSP can coexist at the Oddstad site, even with the additional buildings. I think the parking constraint at Oddstad Park can be resolved through cooperation and through careful strategic planning, I don't think it's an insurmountable problem. And I hope you will support this use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, so we've got a few more cards now on this topic. If anybody else wants to speak on this agenda item, fill out one of these yellow cards and give it to the staff here. We've got Sharon Luce, George Mauro, then Sue Campbell Cook.
Hello, my name is Sharon Luce, and I live on 1107 Cresby Drive, and I'm very happy to have the Spindrift Theater back there, but I too am opposed to the expansion there at that location, just on that small little green, everything else is eucalyptus trees all around. I'd like to see the expansion somewhere else, I can't imagine with the two theaters and the two hundred people where the parking will be. Also, I live up there, and there are packs and families of coyotes, and it seems like they're multiplying and multiplying, I'm concerned about people out there with them, I don't know where they're going to go now. But anyway, thank you for your consideration, and maybe they could do some kind of traffic impact, and then just see if there might be a better location for the expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. George Mauro.
Good evening, my name is George Mauro. I live on Sheila Lane, the top of Sheila, so I'm relatively neighborly to the PSP area. I became a member of the Pacifica Spindrift Players back in 1994, so I've been with them as long as the school has been there. After a couple of years, seeing how the two teams worked together pretty well at the beginning, they started growing, the school started growing, and there seemed to be a need to get somebody in there to organize a little bit better. In 2003, the board of directors of the Spindrift Players made me the production manager, and I became a paid employee, and later became the producing artistic director as well for a number of years, till 2010. It seems like the major issue here is scheduling. I worked with the people who run SSPA about... I worked with the, the people who run SSPA about the scheduling, and we've never, ever had a problem with scheduling. I actually made the schedules for PSP for a number of years. I ran the, the productions. I produced the shows for a number of years. I actually created the calendars throughout the entire year. I actually looked two or three, sometimes three years in advance. And with that in mind, we always shared our big theater with their needs and with our needs as well. So, the issue about parking seems to be a moot point if the scheduling is done properly. Under my tutelage, I also had a number of kids from this Spindrift Players, in the technical end of it, go on to bigger and better places. In fact, one young man is now working on Broadway in New York City because he was able to work with the adult theater, but he was actually part of SSPA. And we've had a couple of other tech people who have actually moved on to, to bigger and better things as well. And if it wasn't for us and for them, we wouldn't have gotten together. So, my point is, the scheduling, we've always been able to work it out without any problems. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue Campbell Cook, followed by Tyler Oakley, followed by Alex Bootson.
Good evening. My name's Sue Campbell Cook. I live at 1193 Manzanita Drive in Pacifica. I have two kids in Spindrift. They started out when they were five and seven, a boy and a girl, and now they're 13 and 16. And I just want to add my voice to the chorus of people saying how valuable Spindrift has been to them. It's taught them teamwork, self-reliance, poise. You know, they may not grow up to careers in the arts, but they'll always carry what they've learned with him, what they've learned at Spindrift. And I really urge you to allow this facility to go forward. I mean, Spindrift is sort of a victim of its own success. They're bursting at the seams. And I'd like to echo what Tom said also about the, the facility at Oddstat. At night, when we go to pick up the kids, it's very trafficky and dark, and you worry a little bit about the safety of those kids running around there. So, I urge you to support this, and thanks very much for your time.
Tyler Oakley.
Hi. My name is Tyler Oakley. I was born in Daly City, but I moved to Pacifica when I was six days old, so I'm local enough. I am a graduate of the Spindrift School of Performing Arts. I started with the Spindrift School when I was nine years old. Then I went to UCSD to study theater. I got my minor in dance, and now I work professionally in San Francisco. Like Mr. Morrow was saying, my story's not entirely unique. One of my best friends is now working in New York as a lighting designer, electrician in theater. And I recently learned, another graduate of Spindrift is now being represented by one of San Francisco's leading agencies. So, a lot of people are aspiring to develop careers in the performing arts, and some of us are developing our careers in the performing arts right now. I used to teach at Spindrift too, so I'm in the unique position of somebody who's taught at Spindrift and been a student at Spindrift. I no longer teach there anymore, nor am I a student, so my interest in this is only for the future generation of children. I can tell you, as a teacher and student, that we do need other spaces. The spaces at Oddstat aren't sufficient. Some people are offering alternate, or are suggesting looking for alternate locations. I've taught at the Sunset Ridge location in the north end of town and at the Cabrillo location, more close to Spindrift. I can tell you that as an employee, working in closer proximity to our office develops a better relationship, more easy communication between my bosses, the office managers, and myself as a teacher. I worked as an intern, so I sort of had to facilitate that communication for a long time, and it makes, it's much easier to be in closer proximity to the location we operate out of. To the people who are looking for alternate locations, I would like to hear suggestions for some, especially in the Lindemar end of town. Also, as a taxpayer in Pacifica, if the reason for keeping the Spindrift location off the Cresby lawn at the Oddstat Park is to preserve it as a neighborhood park, I'd want to know what sort of measures are being taken to preserve that as a park. I haven't been there too recently, but in 2010, the lawn was so uneven and so unkempt that I rolled my ankle on it and couldn't dance for a year after. Now, part of that was my own clumsiness, but there's something to be said for the state of the park there. So, if it's to be maintained as a park, I'd like to know what measures are being taken to preserve it as a park, rather than to add something that's been not only hugely influential in my own life, but in the lives of a lot of my close friends and obviously some of my students out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Bootson.
Hi. My name is Alex Bootson. I started out in 1990 as a music director at Pacifica Spindrift Players. In 1994, Tom Stack, the late Tom Stack, came to my wife and, and me and asked if we would start a school. We said yes. We undertook visioning and creative process around this request, and we founded the Spindrift School of Performing Arts. It was a well-thought-out vision. We were a, like siblings with PSP. Some of my best friends are from my years of doing music directing at PSP. And I think there was a sound vision for how the school and the theater could work together. I really kind of don't understand what the conflict is about. I don't think we would schedule two shows at the same time in two theaters in the same location. And a lot of this new building would be devoted to classes during the day, which was, the original intent was, let's have a school that is, that is helping our youth get into the arts during the day. And I think that this has been a great feeder for our adult theater company, and that they have worked together and fed each other. When we grow, we all benefit. When there is vision for the future, we all benefit. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of young people have been touched. Their lives have been changed, and this is creative. Parking is a mundane issue that can be overcome. We're talking about a vision here for the future of our culture and our society and our town. And I, I think that my late, late wife would be very impressed with where we have arrived at this point in the, in the process, and would be delighted with the, the next phase that is before us. So, I, I hope that we can move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Last call for speakers on this agenda item. We have Ron Makel.
Good evening, Ron Makel. Recognize some of you people up there. How you doing? I didn't come here really to talk about this, but oftentimes when I do come here and there's an item on the agenda, I learn more from the people speaking than I do from, from the staff report or even you guys sometimes. People that live up there, people that are active up there in the theater and all, they, they all shed, you know, various types of, you know, important information on it. So, I, I find that sometimes I need to come up here and speak. But what I did hear a lot about is a problem with eucalyptus trees, eucalyptus trees. And I thought, well, I don't know if, if they're on the property and, and if they are, and it would be helpful to remove. And I highly recommend that you condition removal of some of those eucalyptus trees. They are not heritage tree. They are considered a nuisance and considered to be one of America's largest weeds. So, I'm just, thought I would just shed a little information about that. If, if the eucalyptus trees are a problem, I highly recommend you condition that they remove whatever amount is needed. So, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We've got two last cards. We've got Allison Terry and Kira Robellino.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Allison Terry. I'm a resident of Pacifica. I moved here two years ago, and I live on Barcelona Drive, which is adjacent to Oddstat Park. And before I moved here, I checked out the park. I walked up there. I saw that there's some deer habitat, and there's a green area. And I thought, this is a lovely park. I, I moved to a residential area to be near to a park, not to a school. And from that perspective, I just, I wonder the, the noise impact, the parking impact, and the environmental impact. Like, who's going to be out there to do the surveys to make sure that the deer relocated? I mean, that they're not being, like, killed as you're adding these trailers. I just think that the environmental implications, as well as the public, public use, the increased public use that I personally did not sign up for, so I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Kira Robellino.
Hello. My name is Kira Robellino, and I am an employee of the Spindrift School of Performing Arts. I've been volunteering and working there for almost 16 years. Both my children were raised there. They are the aforementioned New York lighting designer and my, my lovely artist daughter, who is perhaps not a performing artist, but that, those skills have gone with her up until her current life and will continue on, and I'm very grateful for that. Above and beyond that, I, I'm kind of the guy that's there every day. I see the public in and out during the day. I'm the receipt point of hundreds of communications and emails every day. The one thing that the Pacifica parents tell me over and over and over again is how lucky we are to have an organization like this in Pacifica. And we are. I know a lot of different companies around the Bay Area, and we're solid. We're a good company. We, we stick to our mission. And I, I really, really loved what Alex said, its vision and its, its purpose. We don't do anything that's not on our mission. We have no intention of doing 100-seat theater extravaganzas for our kids. We might do a show there, we might, but it would be coordinated, as it has been. We've been courting, like George says, I worked with George for years. We've, we have problems before the performance, like getting out of their way so that they can get in there for a performance. This would alleviate that. This would allow us to, like, leave the premises when they need to be rehearsing. It would allow us to get out of their way. We've had a very successful method of communication in terms of scheduling around their performances. And I see no reason it can't continue. We have no plans to compete. We, we, we don't plan on doing any adult theater business there. These are kids. They should all be in bed by 7:00. So, that, you know, out of my hair and into bed. That said, there might be a class there once or twice that goes later than 7:00. The parents come, they pick them up, they don't park. 90% of what we do up there, they will be dropping off their kids and not parking. We also have the facilities to educate our parents should there be parking or traffic issues, which we fully intend to do. And all I can say is that our mission statement is really worth forwarding, and we need the space. We really, really need the space. We really need it badly. So, thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Thank you for, everybody for speaking on this, on this agenda item. It's wonderful, wonderful to see the community come out and speak. We like to encourage that. At this point, we're going to close the public hearing on this agenda item and invite the applicant, Noel Dewistick, come up. And you can respond to the 20 or so speakers who have spoken. You, you've got, what is it, three minutes? Jeez, three minutes. Good luck.
Okay. Thank you. Someone spoke about alternative spaces. We have looked into lots of alternative spaces. We've also looked at commercial spaces in town. Obviously, that's been cost prohibitive for us. This option that we've come to is affordable. For us being a nonprofit, obviously, we are pinching pennies as best we can. Traffic, there were lots of traffic questions. And we have analyzed this. Christian has asked lots and lots and lots of questions about what our hours of operations are, how many people come into the building at once. If you can imagine, we have three classroom spaces, and in those classrooms, we have about a 1 to 10 ratio of, of kids to instructor. So, at, at every hour, we might have 30 kids there. And again, we're talking kids. As Kira mentioned, we, we, we want them to go home and go to bed at 7:00 when PSP enters the building and they're ready to do their adult rehearsing for adult community theater. Somebody also mentioned scheduling. I really think at just the, but most basic, like, the basic solution to all of this is good communication and scheduling. We have done this successfully for many years. This current Board of Directors and President has been a little bit challenging. That's the challenge that we face. Over the last 17 years, I have encountered seven to eight different boards and PSP presidents. And obviously, as a volunteer organization, you know, everybody has their own special interests, and that communication becomes, you know, different every two years. So, we have to reestablish, you know, a, a, and how to get along. So, but that's something that I'm used to. I've had lots of experience in doing, and I would hate to see our kids suffer because, you know, of, of somebody that thinks we can't communicate and collaborate and schedule. There's been talk of a black box theater and, and how it's going to seat 100 people. If you look in the staff report, that's, that's not what we're proposing. That was something that we proposed, that we were looking at when we had a different building in mind. Modular buildings come and go, and we've actually gone through, this is our third set of modular buildings. We were going to inherit Terranova's modular buildings when we first started our negotiations with the city. Terranova was going to give us their modular buildings. Well, that fell through, and then we received another set, and now we're on to our third set. So, my point being that it was 100-seat theater at some point in time during that whole figuring-out process, but now it's a 70-seat informal theater space. We will only be doing informal music recitals there and end-of-session class shows. So, hopefully that, you know, calms some nerves in that department. Let's see. We also had no problems with parking. Somebody just handed me a note. When we did our party, our anniversary party that Janine mentioned, when we had 300 people at the site, we had no problems with parking or traffic. We had no complaints from neighbors. We had nothing but joy going on in that park. There were also concerns about the lawn area, and we still have a lawn area in our proposal with picnic tables and a gathering space. If anybody's been at that site recently, the barbecues are broken, the sprinklers are broken, the, the grass is dying. It's, it's not one of these typical parks that you long to be at. In fact, we had a terrible break-in recently where, well, not recently. I guess it was about a year and a half or two years ago, where some people came in and did wheelies in that front lawn and then came into our building and stole a bunch of things. So, we are looking to improve that area. We are looking to, to create positive things in that park. And we hope that you look at our project as one of those.
Thanks, Noel.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Can you just hang out there for one sec?
Sure.
Okay. We may have, are there questions for the applicant? Or are there questions for the staff? Oh, Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah. Just a question for the applicant. If you could just explain a little bit more the difference between the, the black box theater for someone who doesn't quite understand what that means 100% versus the, you know, what's actually going to be out there from your perspective.
Sure. So, a black box theater is a flexible classroom space that can be turned into an informal theater space. So, for example... So, for example, we, our multipurpose rooms at our schools, where we can set up chairs, it's a multi-use room with lighting equipment for the theatrical aspect of it.
Thank you.
Could you say it again? How many people would be seated in the informal theater could be seated?
70.
70. Thank you.
Okay. That was, Commissioner Nebelen, that was your light?
That was my light.
Oh, okay.
But I actually have a question.
Very good.
Aside that one, thank you. And this is much for staff, I guess. One of the things I saw in the staff report, I think it was on page four, was a reference to coordination with PSP. And, which seemed like, you know, given everything I've heard, a really great idea to have in here. I didn't, and maybe I missed, I didn't see it as a condition of approval, the requirement that there be ongoing coordination with PSP, as long as PSP, of course, is willing to engage in it. Is that something that could be incorporated as a condition?
We, Commissioner, we went back and forth about that as staff. We figured that the coordination's been ongoing for a number of years. The city's not aware of coordination conflicts that at least have risen to the city's attention. And we didn't want to insert staff unnecessarily into a process that appears to be working. And so, what we've done is attempt to address it another way by providing a consequence to the Spindrift School of Performing Arts in the event that their coordination process fails and the city does receive complaints. At that point, the planning director has authority through condition number 16, or, excuse me, condition number 10, to refer the use permit back to the planning commission for potential additional conditions of approval, additional analysis, and so forth. And that would be a notice public hearing exactly like this one, so the community would have an opportunity as well to comment.
Well, I certainly appreciate the, kind of, the thought process I got there. I, myself, would be supportive of including, in any event, a condition of approval required in the coordination if, as long as, again, PSP, obviously, we can't require PSP to coordinate since they're not parties to the use permit, but that would be something I'd like to suggest to my colleagues.
Exactly. And that's the other half of the problem, compelling PSP to play its part in the coordination, but at least as a directive statement, perhaps, towards the Spindrift School, we could include that type of condition.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add that, if it's okay, that I add something. We're willing to work around their schedule. So, you know, if they want to do shows every weekend, then we will do our shows during the week. You know, and that's kind of how it works now, is they give us their season and we work around their schedule.
Thank you. Actually, I have a follow-up question to staff, and partly for my fellow, excuse me, my fellow commissioners' consideration at the point where we return to commission deliberations. In terms of having a consequence for, it seems like there's a, one of the underlying themes here is a potential communication issue between two parties, and I can fully respect the reticence of the city to get involved in that. In terms of having a condition of approval, I have concerns where the condition of approval, the failure to comply with that condition would only fall upon one of the parties? That would seem to be, that would, to me, that strikes as having equity issues. But that's something that I don't want to necessarily, we should pick that up in deliberations. But anyway, I just, did you guys have any views on that?
That's unfortunately the limitation of the mechanism we have, at least to the limit of my creativity to circumvent that. We have one party asking for a conditional entitlement from the city, and so we don't have an ability to compel existing parties like the Pacifica Spindrift players to play ball, if you will, in this proceeding.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Who's, hasn't, Commissioner Vedelos?
I just still don't actually understand what a black box theater is. It's informal, but...
It's a very, very small informal theater space that can be used for many other purposes.
You said a multipurpose rooms.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you. Did you do any negotiations with the Pacifica Unified School District or the Jefferson Union High School District for property or land?
Yes. We, so, in terms of needing new space, yes, we've gone to Terranova High School, and they offered their portables to us, but they can no longer offer them to us. Within the school district, we have...
Did you, excuse me, did you look for land or opportunity to put your own trailers on their property, or were you just looking to use their portables?
No, we haven't looked for land. Obviously, the land that's right by our main location, 1050 Crespi, is ideal for us. As I think one person mentioned, the idea of having everybody sort of in a central location, staff and students, is more ideal than spread about.
And then what were your, did you look for the Pacifica Unified School District on any of their available land besides using their existing facilities? Did you look to put any trailers on, say, Lindemar, or putting trailers on the other part of Odstad or anything?
Yes. Actually, you are reminding me that we did that. Sorry, this has been like, a three-to-four-year process of figuring all of this out. I did look at Lindemar. I did. They, I think the conclusion that we came to was that that particular space is being totally leased out right now, and they weren't interested in us bringing in modular buildings at that site.
The other question I had, I actually have two more. Did you consider expanding the existing building or adding on to the existing building that you currently have back there?
We've thought about that, however, there's not much space for the spaces that we need. We didn't consider that. Part of the value for us is having a space of our own in this project, because, as you can see, it's been, it's been very difficult sharing the space with the Pacifica Spindrift players. And our students, you know, deserve their own space, and so does our staff.
And the last question I had for you was, I just had a clarification on, I brought up the issue of the stairs and the lighting and the parking lot. Are you looking to the City of Pacifica to maintain the parking lot and the stairs and the lighting and everything else around that park?
We are accepting it as is, so it will be on us to do any upgrades or any improvements.
Are you planning to do any improvements in this project as far as for the parking lots?
As time goes on, absolutely.
But currently, as your budget...
Currently, we are expended as far as our finances go, but of course, the site of the park and its usability is in our interest.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I see another light? Commissioner...
Yeah, I just have one more follow-up question. And this, I think, pertains to something you were saying earlier about, I think, a willingness to, you know, impose certain limits on the use of the flex classroom or the informal theater. And I think you mentioned end-of-session class recitals and things like that, and it seemed to me, part of the concern really was this notion of maybe competing, you know, theatrical performances. I was wondering if you'd be willing to agree to a condition of approval that would sort of limit the use of the informal theater along the lines you were describing, to perhaps maybe address some of the concerns that were expressed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Noel. And I'm not seeing any more lights for questions for the applicants. At this point in time, you can have a seat, and we're going to bring back this matter to the commission for its own deliberations. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, so this is kind of a classic balancing act for us to, we've got a balance of considerations here. We've got some neighbors who like the project, some neighbors who don't, and I think, I want to thank both for coming up and expressing their opinions, and it's, I think, the neighbor opinions is always something that's very important for us to consider. This is actually an issue, I think, I think we're faced with almost an embarrassment of riches here. We've got two great theater troops that want to locate in our city. That's just wonderful. I think it's a, I think it's a conflict a lot of other cities would want. So, what do we do? How do we, how do we fit them in? One of the things that I was looking at was, leaving things as they are right now, you still have two theater troops working on, in the same building, both holding performances and scheduling around themselves, and that's as it stands right now. So, if you added a second building, it seems like you would make that scheduling conflict, you'd make scheduling easier, I think. And that's, to me, what it seems to be coming down to, is, is there a way for these two troops to kind of schedule around each other? And with, I think, a very important distinction being one of them involving children, and I know, as a parent, my schedule's not my own, and I go to a lot of weekday performances, and it seems like there could be a weekend, weekday split there, perhaps. Parking, I know, is a big issue, and, gosh, we allow parking, we give parking variances for such mundane things in the city, restaurants and businesses and hotels, and we do it for cool things, too, the farmer's market, when we did the paid parking at Lindemar Beach, the surfers, you know, because they go out, they're not all paying. The schools, you know, Valamar School, Ocean Shore School, the parking there is insufficient. So, I hate to have parking be a driver for the decision-making here, especially when it seems like the scheduling might be able to get at that. And then, I really was, you know, I would want to hear from my fellow commissioners about the strengths of these conditions, but the condition number 10, which talks about, you know, complaints are going to have, you know, a very serious, they're going to receive very serious consideration from the city, and they could actually move up to public hearing level. We have use permits that might be required if things, if we get too many complaints. And then we'll have, on condition 16, to mitigate parking impacts, there's going to be some things about class session scheduling and special events and things of that nature that are going to have to be scheduled properly. So, you know, I want to hear from my fellow commissioners on this, but it seems to me, with some coordination, maybe this could work, and parking could be overcome. But that's kind of where I'm, that's my preliminary thoughts at the moment.
Thank you for your preliminary thoughts, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Cooper.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I think it's, you know, showing the support of the community and also people who are for it and people who are against it is very important. I think that we all learn a lot when people do speak and people do come out and do different opposing points of view as well. With that, I do have some comments for my fellow commissioners to consider. I don't have any issue with scheduling or with the parking that's currently out there. I think it's adequate. I think that you guys have worked together for the past years. I don't think there's going to be any issue with that. I also think it's great we're bringing people to the city. I think it's wonderful that we have two theater companies and that we're able to bring more people to see Pacifica, both the talent that's here and the artistry that's here, but as well as the city itself. I do have some major concerns, however. My major concern is the aging infrastructure of that park. One thing that I wrote down when we first started this was, what is the designation of a park? We did have an individual come up with a very simple comment of a playing frisbee in a park. You know, as simple as that sounds, it's very important to the community that we do maintain open space for those types of activities. Here, you know, if we do build, if we do build here on this park, there is very little space for anybody else to use. As important as it is, I think, to facilitate what a park is, a park is means many different things to many different individuals. Certainly, it means dancing. Certainly, it means performing arts. But it also means just going to a park in the open space and putting your dog out there and walking your dog around. So, I think that, you know, that is a big concern to me, is that we're using preferential treatment here to facilitate a particular use rather than use for all. And this is a public facility, and it kind of detributes the use for other people. The other issue that I have is that if there is plenty of parking on the lower part, we did have a gentleman speak at the last session who is in a wheelchair. I think it's very difficult to get from that lower parking lot to the upper parking lot. I think it's difficult for anybody to get to the lower parking lot to the upper parking lot. There's inadequate stairs, there's inadequate railings, there's inadequate lighting for transversing that. It is, during a theater event, people do circle around that loop, people do drop off around that loop, and I'd hate to see people walking on that roadway, and I know that's what they will be doing to get from the lower parking lot to the upper parking lot. So, that is of concern to me. You know, there are, I appreciate that you've explored the other facilities. I'd like to hear what my other fellow commissioners say. Again, I think that this aging infrastructure for this currently park and prohibiting a lot of uses is difficult for me to get around, but I'd like to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. I am seeing a light. Commissioner Vedelos.
I disagree, because this is a site for children, and if you're going to be worried about maintaining the current infrastructure and the nighttime, then you would really be putting that burden on to the Pacifica players instead of the school, because they're the ones who usually have their theaters at night. These will be more during the day. So, it's, it's a good idea to have that done, but I don't think the burden should fall upon the school.
Thank you, Commissioner Vedelos. Commissioner Nebelen.
I wanted to echo the comments that you made earlier. I do think that things seem to have been working. I do believe that, I am a little concerned that the expansion up there will have certain sort of growth-inducing impacts that we have to, that we have to think some about, but I tend to agree that coordination and collaboration among the users up there can, could address this. So, I'd come back to what I was saying before about wanting something more directive, to the extent I would be supporting this, something more directive to the party that's actually here before, seeking a permit, recognizing that they can't comply with the condition if only one party is willing to collaborate. But I think to the extent that we state our concern about the need for collaboration and also to the extent that we make clear certain limits on the use of the, of this flexible theater or the flex classroom slash informal theater, that will go a long way toward addressing concerns I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebelen. I'll jump in here. Let's see. I thought Commissioner Campbell's noting, or I think it was Commissioner Cooper's noting that, hmm, let me back up. This is one of those incidences, it happens every couple of years when we're up here. An agenda item comes up to us where the parties have not really been able to successfully work it out amongst themselves prior to the meeting, and so what ends up happening is that that disagreement flows onto, into the evening with lots and lots of speakers talking on both sides of the matter, and it's always better where you, where the private parties can sit down and just work it out amongst themselves first, and that would be ideal. Sometimes, I understand that's not, you're not able to do that, and so this is obviously one of them. But having said that, I am inclined to note that in, under the status quo, as it is right now, I think it was, one of the speakers, George Morrow, said, this is a scheduling issue, and we've been scheduling, we've been coordinating the schedule completely fine for a long time now, and so going forward, I don't, I don't see a big issue with that. And I do think that that would, that would address the parking issue and the traffic issue. I also note that, in terms of the SD, a lot of acronyms, what is it?
SSPA.
Yeah, not the, not the adults, but the kids. I'll just, oh, the SSPA, so the kids group, you know, typically, it's just people driving, it's parents driving up and picking up their kids and dropping them off. It's not, people aren't really parking for more than like five minutes at a time, typically. So, anyway, I guess I'm not concerned too much about the scheduling or the parking issue. I do have heartburn over the, over the condition, it's a tough one, the 10, the condition of approval 10. I mean, because we are, even though you're, I know we don't want to inject ourselves as an arbiter, we kind of are in that condition. And it's not, you know, I don't know, I don't know the right way to go there, but basically, I think if the, if the adult... know the right way to go there, but basically, I think if the, if the adult guys, if the PSP doesn't like what's happening in terms of coordination, they come to you and have a complaint, and then I understand that you have the sole discretion to resolve that as you see fit, and I guess that therein lies a certain ability to smooth things out, but that's, that's a tough role to, to play. So I do, I have concerns about that kind of mechanism. But anyway, but I'm, I'm open to hearing what other people, what other commissioners think about that issue. I did also want to address the park issue. Isn't there a major park right above this area? What's it called? Frontierland? Isn't Frontierland right above?
It's back in the valley.
No?
No.
This isn't, this isn't Oddstat?
This is in the front. This is in the front on Crestview.
Oh, 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 okay, okay, okay. So Frontierland, no, I take that back. So Frontierland is quite a ways away. All right, never mind on that issue. All right. I guess that, that's it for me. Commissioner Nebelen.
Yeah, I had a quick question about condition 10. What's the ordinary process for revisiting a use permit or revocation of a use permit? Is this a more onerous or a, how is this substantively different from what the ordinary process would be if we were looking at a use permit where we got complaints about it?
This is essentially restating the ordinary process.
Okay. Thank you.
I am not seeing any lights. Anybody want to speak? Commissioner Campbell.
Well, having heard from all the commissioners, I, I guess I, at the end of the day, feel like I could support this project. I appreciate the remark by Commissioner Cooper about preferential use, but I think we do that with a lot of open space, not only this city but other cities. You go to Fort Funston, you get dogs. You go to, you go to Oddstat, I'm glad you brought that up, you go to Oddstat Field, the one below Frontierland, you get kid soccer and baseball. So I mean, it's, there's a lot, there's always a kind of a competing hierarchy of uses for any open space, and I think that, again, this is one of these, this is one of these decisions where you've, we've got to balance needs. You know, it's funny, the next agenda item is going to be about increasing family housing in this town and where do we want to put it, and, you know, more kids, more children, it's kind of what we, what we want to be as a community is probably a community that welcomes this type of use in our, in our community. And so I don't want to short shrift the, the parking concerns and the concerns of the neighbors, and I think those are very real concerns, and we, it makes it a tougher call. But at the end of the day, balancing everything that I've seen, looking at the applicant's offsite analysis, they've obviously looked at sites offsite, and then they did their onsite analysis, and they've looked at how to avoid impacts, minimize impacts, and then we've got two conditions that mitigate impacts. It seems that all in all, I would bet yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Vederlos.
My biggest thing that I circled on, on all of my notes was the coordination with Spinder Players. I think that's happened in the past, I think it can happen in the future. I think that condition 10 is sufficient to cover that, because I don't think we can condition the other side on their use permit.
Thank you, Commissioner Vederlos. Are we getting close to a motion, a consensus on a motion? Commissioner Nebelen.
Well, I think my original thought would have been to include some additional things, but it doesn't sound like my colleagues necessarily believe that it's necessary, and I'm prepared to make a motion to approve, and I'd move that the Planning Commission find the project as exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approve use permit UP 04014 to adopting the resolution that we have in our packet here, including conditions of approval and Exhibit A to that resolution, and incorporate all the maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebelen. Commissioner Campbell.
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion and a second, please vote. That motion passes.
[applause]
And you went aggrieved by the action of the Planning Commission as 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. Okay, we are moving on to the next agenda item, agenda item number two.
Thanks, sorry, I didn't get it.
[coughs]
It's coughing over me.
Very nice job summarizing everything there that she did, I thought that was...
Sounded good to me.
It sounded great to me.
I'm just going to give everybody a moment for, to depart the building. All right, further on. Okay, we are ready to move on to the second agenda item, which is consideration of a negative declaration for general plan amendment GPA-90-15 and general plan amendment GPA-90-15 initiated by the City of Pacifica Planning Department to amend the housing element of the general plan for the period 2015 to 2023. The recommended sequest status is a negde, negative declaration. The proposed action is to recommend to the City Council the adoption of one, a negative declaration for general plan amendment GPA-90-15, and two, a general plan amendment GPA-90-15. Could we have a staff report?
Good evening again, Honorable Chair and Honorable Planning Commissioners. Christian Murdock, Assistant Planner with the Planning Department. Staff has prepared a housing element document attempting to balance many factors and priorities while complying with state housing law. It is up to the Planning Commission to further refine staff's work and prepare a recommendation to the City Council. Adoption of the housing element is due by May 31st, or else the city will face various consequences that are very serious. The City Council is scheduled to hear this item on May 11th and will consider the Planning Commission's recommendation on the housing element and the negative declaration. The Planning Commission has wide discretion to recommend changes to the draft housing element at this stage of the process, provided that the remaining housing element meets the city's regional housing needs allocation or RENA, and does not eliminate any other elements essential to the state Housing and Community Development Department's finding of conformance to state law. Staff will advise the Planning Commission if the discussion begins to focus on any of these key items. Lastly, staff has identified several areas where it intends to amend the draft housing element prior to consideration by the City Council, and asks for the Planning Commission's support of these changes. These include various typographical errors, filling in placeholder data, various changes in response to public comment if directed by the commission. These particular items have been called out in your packets in response to the public comments received. Clarification and correction of the number of housing units constructed versus those approved, permitted, or built. The difference is 205 in the former case and 262 in the latter. The draft housing element should reflect the latter figure with units approved, permitted, or built. Clarification of statements regarding the Clara Parkway project, ensuring it is clear that the housing element does not endorse the project or approve the project. Removal of a reference to the Hacienda Court and Calson properties that were both included in an earlier draft. There is a statement in the existing draft that regards these sites as contentious, and staff proposes to remove that characterization. And finally, a revised land inventory table, or tables, rather, incorporating alternative sites if incorporated by the Planning Commission. Those were included as an attachment and were provided in response to public comments with concern about particular housing sites. So with that, commissioners, staff is prepared to answer any questions and kindly requests a commission recommendation of approval to the City Council for both the draft housing element and the corresponding negative declaration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that helpful staff report. Do we, do I see any questions for staff? I just have one question, and it's, it's basically, I'm just asking for you to repeat yourself on a couple of things that you just said, because there was a lot of information that you just gave, and I just, for the benefit of the audience, I just wanted a clarification in terms of the, so there were a couple of, there were a couple of properties that were removed from the, from this version as compared to the last version?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there were several properties that were removed as the city attempted to, or staff, rather, attempted to address community concerns that arose at the study session.
Okay. And they were, what were they again?
And two of those properties were the Hacienda Court property and what was called the Calson property in Pedro Point.
Okay, thank you very much. And you also mentioned something about changing language regarding the Clara Creek project?
The Clara Parkway project, it's a well-known project to the community, it involves widening of Highway 1. There is a poorly worded phrase in the draft housing element that, one, without knowledge of the process, could imply the city is supportive or the housing element otherwise endorses or approves that project. That's not at all the case, and that's not staff's intention with the draft housing element. This document should remain neutral on that project. It's not up to the housing element to approve or endorse the project. It's merely mentioning it because it could have bearing on future housing development, and the city necessarily must identify that potential constraint to housing development.
Great. Thanks a lot. Sorry to make you repeat yourself. Commissioner Cooper.
I remember we did the public hearing on this, and we had quite a few people that commented on, on the document, as well as my fellow commissioners. Did we add any other properties to the available land?
Yes, staff went back and attempted to find additional sites that fit the direction received from the commission and from the public, primarily trying to find more commercial sites that were not vacant but had existing commercial development, but were underutilized and were not inclusive of mixed use, including residential. And so staff tried to identify as many sites as it could under the current general plan that were capable of supporting mixed use and that were located in areas that had what we would consider the best transit access, even though the city's transit access is not ideal, but those include areas in the north of the city, primarily surrounding the Pacific Manor Shopping Center. And so a number of parcels in that area were identified as underutilized and potential mixed use development sites.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
To that issue, I'm curious what the city's thinking was on North Palmetto. I noticed that, that stretch of area north of IBL leading up to Pacific Manor is, that wasn't addressed at all, and I know we had a Planning Commission meeting, joint, actually session with City Council, maybe five, six years ago, where we talked about upzoning that area, along that stretch of the coast, along North Palmetto. Was any consideration given to that area?
Commissioner, no, there was not a great deal of focus given to that area. Under the existing land use designations in the general plan and the existing zoning, that site functions primarily as a light industrial area, and so the existing zoning and land use designations would not support mixed use housing along North Palmetto, especially in the C3 zoning district. The zoning standards do not allow residential uses in that zone. And so, short of proposing a swath of rezonings in conjunction with the housing element to meet the city's RENA, staff identified sites that would comply with the current general plan and zoning designations.
And correct me wrong, but can't, can't you actually propose a swath of rezoning to meet the housing element?
You absolutely can, Commissioner, but then it commits the city to accomplish those rezonings within one year of adoption of the housing element, and that's heavy lifting for a city with our resources and staffing, which is also in the midst of a general plan update and various other day-to-day operations. So since it was not necessary to accomplish the, provide for the city's RENA, it wasn't something that we thought was the best course of action.
And was that the reason that North Palmetto was not considered?
I'd say those are two primary reasons. Yes, the existing zoning did not support it, and the work involved with changing the zoning would, was not required to meet the city's RENA.
I'll have more questions on that later, thank you.
I don't see any more lights, no more questions for staff at this time. We can definitely ask them more questions later. So at this point, we are going to open up the public hearing. Is that the next step, since there's not really an applicant who's going to give us a presentation, right? Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing, and we've got a number of cards, so I'm going to, I'm going to call out three names at a time to give you guys some heads up, and you've got three minutes to speak on the agenda item number two. So here we go. Ellen Haig, Leo Leon, and Monica Olson.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Haig. I'm a resident of Pacifica and a member of SFOP PIA. I am concerned that the housing element does not adequately address the crisis of a lack of affordable housing in Pacifica. Our community is undergoing a great deal of upheaval. Families are leaving the area because they cannot find rental housing that they can afford. The word that I'd like to emphasize and hope you remember is displacement. Our community is at risk as families are being displaced and forced to relocate to other areas far away. We need to have housing that people can afford at all income levels, and the reality is that it is only going to happen if Pacifica has a policy of rent stabilization. I know this isn't popular with some people, but this housing crisis is not going away and is getting worse, and we cannot afford to ignore the problem and hope it goes away. I spoke with the Pacifica Resource Center today and learned that people are having trouble even affording a room to rent, because folks from Silicon Valley who are having difficulty finding housing offer to pay the landlord more money. Many communities in the Bay Area are discussing rent stabilization and are realizing this is the only effective way to deal with the problem. I hope the City of Pacifica will join other Bay Area communities in a serious consideration of rent stabilization. There was a time when it might have been considered reasonable to exclude rent stabilization, but this is no longer the case with the skyrocketing rents that are taking place now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leo?
Honorable Chairman, Planning Commission staff, Leo Leon, Malaga Ridge. I want to start off with a, an issue also known as public comment letter 17. I did submit in my comments on page four on the housing element and the regional share housing allocation, the numbers just simply don't make sense, they don't add up. The city, the city states that the document is a key component of the housing element, and its assignment is essential, an essential step. Yet, if you analyze carefully the population trend in Pacifica, and you look, I mean, you know, I'm a former census manager, field operations manager, so I know a bit about the census, and you look at the persons per household in Pacifica going back to 1960, and you do each decennial census analysis, you see the housing population decreasing to the point over one person per household. So how ABAQ can say that Pacifica is going to grow 6% between 19, between 2010 and 2020 just doesn't make any sense. It's not going to happen. It affects me personally is my entire section, there was no comments from staff. So I don't know what happened, if I missed it. The way the comments are written, unlike some environmental comments, the commenter's letter, you know, with the points are not numbered, underlined, or identified and tied to a response. So the responses are done differently. So when you go back and read everything, I looked at all the responses from staff with my number on it, and I didn't see anything addressing this very critical and essential part of the housing element. So I'm at a loss, what happened? And until these questions are answered, and till we know the validity of the regional housing allocation, I don't think we can really go anywhere. It's just that important. So I would love to see an answer to these questions. I'm running out of time. I want you to support the Open Space Committee, also known as the Open Space Park Land Advisory Committee, and their use and reliance on the Open Space Task Force report. I think that's very essential, it's established, and they've done great work. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Leo. Monica Olson?
I'm Monica Olson, and I'm just concerned, as I am a member of San Francisco Organizing Project, as well as Pacifica's affiliation with that group, and we just need some leadership about the crisis of affordable housing. And especially now, it's just coming down to the seriousness of the rental market just exploding. And it isn't making us a better city. And we've lost teachers, and we've, we just keep hearing, because that's our job, of the people having to move. And so I guess I'm just asking, we need the leadership somewhere. I don't know whether staff or, because when we've had a few issues, it seemed like the neighborhood was stirred up by some people that were very misinformed. And so we just need leadership somehow to address this problem. Thank you.
Okay, we've got, next up we've got Tom Clifford, followed by Gloria Stofan, followed by Victor Carmichael.
Hi, Tom Clifford here, I live on Sheila Lane. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have a couple of issues. My first issue is a former planning commissioner, a former chair of the planning commission, a former Open Space Committee member, and the chair of the Open Space Committee, and also the liaison from the planning commission to the Open Space Committee. I am deeply concerned that we're talking about discontinuing using the Open Space Report as a document to check back to, on what has been identified as very sensitive properties. We're not asking, you know, it's not a point of everything would have to go to the planning, the Open Space Committee parklands. It's a matter of very few properties would wind up. Making a small presentation, which would actually serve them, because if they know what the environmental issues might be on that property, they can come to you with a better understanding of what they need to do. And you will also have the recommendation from the Open Space Committee available to you. The same goes for the city council. So I think it's a really bad idea to discontinue using the Open Space Task Force Report. Another issue I had was with the idea that the conversations I had at the various meetings, I've been to all of them about this, were not kept as comments in the, in the report that was presented. I see that as closing down an avenue of public participation, rather than opening things up. Now, I'm not saying if I buttonhole a staff member out in the hall, that that should be recorded in the, your housing element. But if I'm sitting here at a meeting and make a point, I would prefer that it got, somebody made notes and actually put it in and made, you know, answered those points. So that's, that's that. And my third comment, I've got the whole 30 seconds, is that I have mentioned before one way to deal with the very low housing part of the element is to make changes to the in-law zoning. And that's something you guys can do. And what you do is you actually get credit for what's happening out there. Some of this is happening anyway, but it's being done illegally because they can't meet the requirements. The requirements need to be slightly adjusted, and then the city will get credit for those very low units. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Who's next? Gloria?
Good evening, thank you for giving me this time. I'm also here about the affordable housing issues and the concern of our city and our cities here on the peninsula. We were constantly hearing, and I know I feel like I'm a record, a repeating record about the housing issue, but it seems to have come to really dire crises. And I'm seeing more homeless in Lindemar area, on the beach, in the parking lots in Rockaway Beach, and it's scary, it really is. Not because they're causing any problems, it's just that we're having a difficulty at this time with where can we live? Many of them are living in their cars, and that's not right. I wanted to address the fact that production of houses is not where we're coming from right now. People are hurting right now. It's very painful for them. As a resident of Pacifica, a longtime resident, and a member of SFOP PIA, I strongly recommend that rent stabilization, which is not a popular consideration, might be seriously considered. Affordable housing is a big issue, and it's, it's a way of keeping the community and people stable. That's my understanding, and housed. As Monica said, we're losing teachers, we're losing good, hard-working people. I strongly urge you to consider and investigate rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Carmichael, followed by Ron Mako and Hal Bonner.
Hi, my name is Victor Carmichael, and I was going to originally talk just about some of the issues I had with the housing element, but I see a lot of people are talking about affordable housing, so I can kind of link that into my spiel here. I read through the Housing Element Update Report, and I discovered something interesting. The population of Pacifica's actually declined between 2000 and 2011, we're kind of flatlined. So we're, ABAG, apparently ABAG is Association of Bay Area Governments, I think that's what it means, ABAG, is kind of allocating housing to this area. And so we've got X number, I can't remember what the number was, it bounces around, but those houses are going to have to be spread all over town. And here I see it's a negative declaration on this issue, which is crazy, since it's going to be a very controversial where these houses all wind up. Some of the houses are slated to wind up in, of all places, the FISH. And I was here last time, I think, talking about the fish in the bowl. And the FISH, of course, is the area that's up, was never in the original development that was fought, fought over in the, 10 years ago. But it was the reason that that development never went in, because there's three wetlands in there, and I have the maps of those wetlands, which I'll give to you when I leave. Secondly, this whole area is getting, the houses that do go into the FISH, and the ones that are planning to go into this triangle down by the part of, a piece of the old bowl, these are not going to be affordable housing by any stretch of the imagination, despite the fact that they're only 400, 450, I think it ended up with 450 square feet. They're little places, they're going to have wonderful, magnificent views, and they're going to cost a fortune to rent. So that's not going to help this other issue one bit. When I read the affordable housing part of the health, of the housing element, it turns out Pacifica's got a bad rating on that. We're way under what we should be. All of our housing is all top-end. I watched a bunch of big, million-dollar houses be approved last time I was here, too. So what you're doing isn't helping this out. What I would like to do, though, is instead of complaining, is just ask that you consider moving the fish and bowl parcels out of these parts that's allocated in the housing element, because that's not a really good place to add housing. It's not going to help anybody, and it's going to be fought over, because these aren't even good places to build. That's about all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Mako.
Good evening, Commissioners, to me again, and welcome, new planning department staff. Welcome to Pacifica. Pacifica, as you'll probably find out, land use is probably the most concerning and most, oftentimes, the most contentious issue in Pacifica. So it matters a lot to everybody in town. I mean, even the Chamber of Commerce, of course, maybe for a different way than open space people. But my concern is that with the housing element is getting, feeling a sense that there's going to be some, you know, disengagement with the Open Space Task Force in the housing element. You know, these things have been kind of integrated. And I'm speaking as a former planning commissioner, and as a former 10, you know, 11-year member of the Open Space Committee, and a former liaison person for the GGA Advisory Committee. So, anyway, they are, they have been integrated, not, you know, totally integrated, but whenever there was a piece of property that had hillside preservation zoning, or open space residential, or maybe the possibility of a density transfer was going to be used, it would come before the Open Space Committee for preliminary review. I mean, that made sense. And it was done so by the director of the planning department, I'm not going to mention any names, but he usually would, he would do that. He'd go, let's bring it to the Open Space Committee, this is their purview. Then it would go to the planning commission, and the planning commission, a lot of the preliminary work could be done for you guys, and then it made it easier for you. And I think it is even more cost-effective for the, for the developer as well, you know, not having to pay for study sessions and stuff. But, anyway, I really think you should maintain, you know, keeping that engaged. And if there's some concern about the Open Space Task Force Report needing some changes, do like they did when I was on the Open Space Committee about seven or eight years, 10 years ago. We had to revisit the Open Space Task Force Report, we had to review it, and we had to make some changes to it. We revised it. It had been revised once, and we had to contact property owners and go through the narratives and whatnot. But what I'm trying to point at is if there's, if you think there's a need for the Open Space Task Force Report to be reviewed, or whatever, looked at again, then give it, then have the council direct the Open Space Committee to take a look at it again, see, see, with some recommendations for some things for them to specifically, specifically look at. So, but anyway, please, you know, don't take a cursory approach to this thing, and, you know, make sure you keep the integration between the Open Space Task Force Report and housing element in place, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Hal Bonner, and then we'll have Chaya Gordon and Noel Blinko.
Good evening, Commissioners. First of all, I want to thank Chair Gordon for asking staff to slow down on what they were describing, because one of these issues that staff was talking about is the Clara Parkway, which is of major significance to me and a lot of other people in this town. And it was dealt with in one way in the draft housing element, and then I see, and many of us complained about how it was dealt with. And then in the last staff report, it was dealt with somewhat differently, staff saying that they would rethink the wording, or something along those lines. And then tonight, I hear some other different words around, well, we're going to possibly change this in some way to make it, I don't even know what he said, to be honest with you. But we would like to see what the language is. I don't think that's an unreasonable request, that we see what it is, before we can really comment on it intelligently. But, but thank you, sir, for bringing this up and highlighting the point. I would also like to say I have submitted a lot of written comments about this. There was, staff report responded to some of them. Frankly, I disagree with practically everything the staff report said in response to what I said in my written comments. I don't know what you folks are going to say about any of that, maybe you're going to completely ignore it, I don't know. But I won't have another chance to respond, apparently, so I'm just saying that I disagree with what it staff has said, and I think I probably disagree with what you folks are going to say. But, of course, I won't have an opportunity to say that unless you give us another chance to comment when we see a revised draft housing element, which I would recommend that you do. Go through another revision, another draft, and then put it out for public comment, and then bring it back for you guys to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chaya Gordon?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Chaya Gordon, and I live on Rockaway Beach Avenue. I have a number of concerns, I'm going to make it brief about each one of them. First of all, I just wanted to echo the concerns that a few other speakers mentioned about the housing element supporting the Open Space Committee recommendations and affordable housing recommendations. In fact, I think we've all noticed that the phrase affordable housing is actually, seems to be out of its, on route out of the lexicon because of the cost of housing in this area, and so it's become below market rate. And I just urge you to pay attention to that, because the market rate is so unaffordable for most of the citizenry. And I think that applies to Pacifica, as well as San Francisco and the general area. I'd also like to mention in regards to references to the Clara Parkway project, that it has not been finalized, and its future is uncertain. And I appreciate what's been mentioned here tonight to make references to the Clara Parkway project neutral. I also want to refocus your attention to what happened at the election last November, which, the city council election, which was that Sue DeGruy, an incumbent who has been a staunch opponent of the Clara Parkway project, was the highest elected vote getter for council. And John Keener, who was also a staunch opponent of the Clara Parkway project, was elected from a very large field of new candidates for council. I think that the message there from the people of Pacifica is really clear, and I urge you to focus on that and not ignore it. And that message is, in case anybody is unclear on what I'm talking about, the people of Pacifica do not want the Clara Parkway project. And the only reason why I mention that tonight in relation to the housing element is because references to it are unclear, because it has not been finalized, and they do not belong in the housing element. Similarly, the general plan specifies that the capacity of Highway One should not be increased, and the Clara Parkway project clearly increases the capacity of Highway One, and that will be a problem of inconsistency unless that language is fixed. I had some comments about the negative declaration. comments about the negative declaration not meeting the requirements of law, which I think you know those arguments. So I just wanted to mention that. Please hold public hearings to allow oral public comment on the housing element. It is not in the city's best interest to take a narrow view of limiting public comments to written only. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Noel Blinco, followed by Cheryl Coulson and Ron Coulson.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm up here as a consequence of what was put into the housing element. It was called Program 14. And essentially, it would gut the Open Space Task Force report many items that the original Open Space Committee had covered and what is in the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee currently. This is the report. This is 27 years old. It's been with our city. This was a major driving force. It resat council people. It took us down many years. And if you look up on our hills, we got beautiful hills. And the reason why we got beautiful hills, because we had many people jumping into environmental issues and into this Open Space Task Force report. And I would suggest, as a Planning Commission, please eliminate this Program 14 where this is being advised to be discontinued. I want to mention in the past, the Open Space Committee where they worked on Malaga Ridge. If you drive up and you look east on Malaga Ridge, you will see a lot of open hills. There are 23 houses at the lower level. But because a study session went through the original Open Space Committee, we were able to give input for the developer and the developer going through the Planning Commission and City Council reduced the project to 23 houses. So the document becomes a real important document with regard to open space residential, hillside preservation district, and reviewing these type of projects. One project that we did on the original Open Space several years ago was a density transfer. And when we brought it before the Planning Commission, they voted at that time six to zero. And there was one absence at the time. So this report has been used. And with the Open Space Committee going through it, we can bring information to the Planning Commission. So through a study session working with developers, developers, it rings a bell with them that they need to be extra careful on how they're going to develop projects. So please eliminate this Program 14 from being discontinued. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cheryl Coulson.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Coulson. I'm one of the owners of the Coulson property. I appreciate the recommendation made by staff tonight to delete the language referencing the Coulson property as contentious in the current document. I really appreciate that. I've been in email conversation with the city manager, Ms. Timfo, about the upcoming joint discussion of this Planning Commission and the City Council regarding the general plan update. And in my latest email, Ms. Timfo indicated that the housing element is going to be approved May 11th. So that brought me to look at the documents today because Ron and I will not be present for that meeting. We'll be out of the country. So this is our opportunity. And looking at both documents, the 2007 through 14 housing element and the current, the new proposed housing element, we found out today and looking at this, that the Coulson-San Pedro Avenue location was no longer in the newer document. It's not located in the Table 3-1 or Table 3-2 that appear on pages 75 through 77 and 79 through 81. And we're really displeased to discover this, that this omission in the new housing element, especially without any prior knowledge or communication from the city of Pacifica, we request that the Coulson-San Pedro Avenue location be added back to both tables in the new 2015 to 2023 housing element, as we discussed with Ms. Wehrmeister today. And furthermore, we had a discussion with an A-BAG representative today that supports this addition as a buffer to the determined units. I did have opportunity to look at some of the state code. And the California State Legislature has stated the availability of housing is of vital statewide importance and the early attainment of decent housing and a suitable living environment for every Californian is a priority of the highest order. So we believe that the vague declaration that is going to be deleted, that the site was contentious, is an invalid justification for the removal of a viable site from the housing element under the stated goals and provisions of Article 10.6. Thank you.
Finish what you've got.
Thank you. Ron Coulson?
Yes, sir. My name is Ron Coulson. I'm co-owner with my wife of the, what people have been referring to as a Coulson Field. It is a flat piece of property that was formerly Gulf Driving Range. It sits in back of Peter Point Shopping Center. It is legally part of the San Pedro Terrace by the Sea Residential subdivision, as is the whole surrounding hillside. It's part of the same subdivision as that. It was zoned to allow for any zone residence, to allow 115 units over around four commercial. And that's in the code. When Lee years was here and was discussing with the state, the state said, is that compatible use with the site? Lee said he would look at it further, came back and said that a compatible use with the site would be about 50 units. 1969 general plan had it listed as medium density housing. That's what 50 units is to that site and that size. And so it is, it was by Diet and Patia had suggested putting on the site when they first began doing the general plan, to put on park, hotel, commercial, high density and medium density housing. We disagreed with that. When the 115 units with the state was talked about, we disagreed with that. We said 50 units is a more reasonable number to begin with. And we've had a consultant, a former director of San Francisco, director of planning, has written up and it's part of what the materials that we presented are in there. And discusses why the most compatible use with the site is housing. And as far as being controversial, so far, we're the controversy. I mean, there's been no other comment in terms of what made this, or is having this labeled as being controversial. So it was subdivided as a housing residential subdivision. It was looked at and is looked at in the existing, present zoning as housing as one of the uses. And we were looking at doing something on the order, and I'll leave it with you. This is from October the 11th, pardon me, October 2011. And it was something that we wrote up and it was a picture that we drew up of what should be done on the property that we distributed to the neighbors. And we had something that we thought was a good design that might go along with it. So, 30 seconds. Oh, I hope that I can leave this with you. You'll take a look at it. But we would definitely like to see ourselves removed from the list because we don't know why it was put on in the first place. And we don't agree with the contentious thing. I mean, we understand that there are neighbors that would prefer that they keep it as a golf park, which they use it as an off use golf park now. But we would like to be able to get something back about the 20 years that we've owned. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? This is your time. Final call. Julie Lancel.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience and all your hard work, all the things you have to do to accomplish what you accomplish. I just had a few comments on this, the draft element that's before you. I want to just follow up on some of the comments that were made particularly by members and former members of the Open Space Committee. And as you know, right now, we have an Open Space and Parkland Committee. And I really want to emphasize the important role that the committee plays with regard to vet, in a way, not exactly vetting, might not be the right word, but at least provide an opportunity for someone who's about to invest a lot of money in some kind of a development to get feedback from people in the community who know the community very well, who know what the community's needs are. I don't think I'm being pretentious to say that. I think, you know, they're aware of the type of community Pacifica is, which is a community that seeks to find a balance between development, commercial success in the business community, and also the protection of the beautiful natural assets that we are blessed to reside within. And I just think it's very, it's really short sighted to not include the Open Space, and now it's the Open Space and Parkland Committee, in, you know, simply for consultation. Obviously, the Open Space and Parkland Committee has no role in terms of approving a project or anything. And the role, as Noel described it, was as consulting as providing feedback and really providing information before someone goes so far ahead and creates a project that the community may not be satisfied with, with regard to the regarded shows for open space and for parkland and for a balance. I, let's see, I was jotting notes feverishly and I'm running out of time. I noticed that they were considering not discontinuing cohousing. And I know that even though for 20 years, nothing has happened with it since it came to our attention, I think that it's a really up and coming, future oriented type of housing for people. And I don't think we should discontinue it. So I've seen things, the way it's set up in places like the Netherlands and in Europe, and it's quite, quite a nice situation for people. And I think it might be part of the future at least. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any more cards. So I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission. And opening up deliberations, Commissioner Campbell.
So I've just got a nuts and bolts question for staff on the deadline for approval of this housing element. I see that the deadline for housing element adoption is May 31st in the staff report. And is that, is that the deadline for submittal to the State Department of Housing? Or is that an internal deadline? Or can you clarify that?
That's the deadline for submittal to the state.
That's the deadline for submittal to state. And so I see that, now, is there any sort of a 120 day grace period or anything like that that we get after that? I'm not quite sure I read the statute right. But is that the drop dead deadline?
Yes, to my understanding, that is the deadline.
Commissioner, we're currently in the grace period and that ends on May 31st. I believe the actual deadline was January 31st for adoption. And this is the grace period.
So I'm sure I'm not the only commissioner here who's feeling a little jammed up by the timing because I think the staff is correct. There are serious consequences if we don't approve this. And my understanding, one is that we go on a four year cycle?
Yes.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, it gets harder to disapprove of affordable housing projects as proposed in that, in those four year periods? Or am I wrong on that?
I'm not aware of how that impacts your ability to approve or deny projects.
Okay.
Commissioner, one consequence is if the city proposed to rezone in a previous housing element and it did not, and the city then does not adopt a new housing element, applicants can then come in and enjoy essentially a deemed approved status of those projects and only go through ministerial review as opposed to discretionary review that would ordinarily be required. So that's a serious consequence of not adopting a housing element.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's, that's what I wanted to get on the record. I just cannot believe that, I have to just say, we, the Planning Commission has been sitting idle, meeting after meeting, nothing's agendized on this for months. And now we're getting this at the 11th hour with the gun to our head, saying approve it, or we blow this deadline and get into the situation where projects get approved ministerially. Is that, I'm just going to recess for a moment.
One of the comments that I think came up was the fact that we should put in writing the comments during our study sessions. And I don't know how everybody else feels here, but I disagree. I think that it's, it's one of the few times that we have an open forum to discuss projects without having a written log of items that come up. You know, even in our professional environment doing construction, someone asks a question, I always say, hey, put it in RFI, put it in a request for information, put the written word down. And the reason for that is twofold. The first reason is that I want it on a documented list. And the second one is I don't want to interpret someone's question unless it's in writing and I hear it. Sometimes I hear things differently than what the question was asked. So I think it is very important that all questions are put in writing, especially during the study sessions. If you want an open forum, this is an area which everything is documented. But in a study session, really, I think it deserves that openness and that candidness from both the community and from the commissioners. I thought it was really interesting. I was reading through this as well. And I think Julie Lancel brought it up, is this cohousing in this community type of living? I think that's an interesting concept. I know we have it in here as one of the encouraged development of. And I think that's, that is an interesting concept. I think, I do appreciate everybody coming up and talking about this open space. It is one of the unique parts of Pacifica. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, but I certainly would like to keep them included in the, in the process. I think it provides a very valuable service for both a developer and for anybody who wants to develop in this. And I certainly appreciate more people taking a look at our open space within, within the community. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Nebelen.
Yes, thank you. I think my point was partially covered and really was the number of comments we got about the Open Space Task Force report and the discontinuance of, I guess it was Action Program Number 14. And just wondering if staff had any further thoughts or whether the position has changed with respect to that recommendation on the basis of anything that was heard here. I just want to have an opportunity to talk about that.
And staff is well aware of the community concern as well and appreciates the feedback from the public expressing the importance of this item. As far as continuing this item in the existing, or excuse me, the future housing element, there's really two parts to this. One is staff referring to the Open Space Task Force report when reviewing residential applications. And then the second part is forwarding proposals for residential development to the Open Space Parkland Advisory Committee. And so I think to the first part, staff really doesn't have an objection to inserting this in the draft housing element as an ongoing policy. It's not really appropriate as an action program. We're held to account on what action programs we put forth. We have to establish quantified objectives and specific timelines. And so it's really difficult to forecast what applications might come in. But it really does make sense to include as an ongoing policy since it appears so important to the community. And so I don't think there's any staff resistance to that. To the second part about forwarding proposals to the resident, to the Open Space Task Force Advisory, or excuse me, the Open Space Parkland Advisory Committee, staff, I think, remains neutral on that. It's really a decision for the city council to make. You can see relatively recently, the city council adopted a resolution identifying four focus areas for the, for OSPAC and referrals of development projects was not one. one of them. And so for staff to advocate for that moving forward is probably inappropriate. But really, to pose that as a question to the City Council and in light of their resolution, we think is the best course of action.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebelen. Commissioner Vadoz.
There was a lot mentioned in here today about the Clara Parkway. And in the response to several of the letters, it is indicated that either construction or failure to construct the Parkway could impact future housing. For that reason, mention of this project is warranted. It may or may not be built, but it should be mentioned in the draft housing element. And I just wanted to, people said they didn't get an answer to that, and there is definitely an answer to that comment about it being included in the housing element. Also, this is totally different, but the in-law zoning, there are many, many in-law units in Pacifica that could be affordable housing if there were lesser regulations on those in-laws and could allow them to be rented. Can I keep going? There, the, in, the exclusion of the Kelson property, the Quarry, the Hacienda sites because of contentiousness, I personally think that all the sites should be considered for housing in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Vadoz. I'm going to, I'm going to jump in real, real quick here, go through my list. First, the easy stuff. I agree with Commissioner Cooper that I would like to, I have a problem with discontinuing the role of the Open Space Task Force Report in this process, and would like to see that discontinuance discontinued. I also agree about cohousing. I think, what's the word? It's a, it's a goal. It's a goal. I understand that it hasn't been relevant to, in Pacifica for a long time, if ever, but it's still a goal. So I'm, I agree with the comments from the public that that discontinuance should also be reconsidered. I agree with Commissioner Cooper about the comments to be considered, they really should be in writing. I think that's, that's a very commonsensical approach. As far as the removal of the Kelson San Pedro Avenue property from the table, I just wanted to remind everybody that, well, actually, I'll ask staff on this. The removal from the table, does that have any implications for the ability to get a project approved on that property, one way or another?
It absolutely does not, Mr. Chair. Inclusion in the housing element table is really meeting the minimum standards set by the state to ensure that the city of Pacifica has enough sites to meet its regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. There are communities out there that are not as supportive of housing as Pacifica, and in the past have gone to great lengths to, through zoning and other mechanisms, to prohibit residential development and to essentially set that at zero. And so the state has this mechanism to ensure that cities are providing a minimum number of sites to meet what's been determined as their regional housing need. And so we're fortunate in Pacifica to where we have ample sites to meet the RENA. The housing element does not set land use development regulations. It does not set land use designations. That's done in the land use element of the general plan. And so any site that's not included in this still retains all of its rights that are included in the land use element of the general plan. And so it has zero bearing on the developability of any particular site, included or excluded.
Great, great. I just wanted to clarify that for the, for the property owners and for Commissioner Vadoz. Tom Clifford from the public raised a really interesting notion about changing, changes to the in-law zoning. Would you guys have any comments about that?
Sure. The commission will notice that there is an action program included in the draft housing element to amend the city's second dwelling unit regulations. There are a number of minimal changes that we have to make, I shouldn't characterize them as minimal, there are some mandatory changes the city needs to make to comply with state law that are intended to be more permissive for second unit development, that will require an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and that will go through a public process. And so members of the public and the commission and the City Council will have their opportunities to call for additional components to that amendment, provided that we meet the minimum standards set in state law.
Oh, how do we initiate the process?
So our municipal code has a set of requirements, the first being the Planning Commission must adopt a resolution of intent to initiate a municipal code amendment, a zoning ordinance amendment. After that, the commission must have a public hearing and make a recommendation to approve or disapprove that amendment to the City Council.
I know, I guess it's off agenda, I guess I'll, yeah. So in terms of moving forward on that particular item, is that something that we should get a consensus on so that we can put it on the future agenda item? Are people in favor of that? Is it, could we get that on a future agenda?
Mr. Chair, that's certainly the will of the commission. However, there are a lot of moving parts to this draft housing element. And so staff has proposed a timeline for consideration of aspects such as the second housing unit standard amendment. And so to push that forward at this time, I don't know that we would be supportive of it, but certainly makes sense for the commission to go on record as supporting that aspect of the draft housing element, for staff to bring it forward at the earliest opportunity. Undertaking zoning amendments is not as simple as just changing the text. There's often environmental review and comparison to other zoning codes, city attorney review, checking in with the coastal commission. So there are a lot of aspects to initiating and pursuing that amendment.
There's not a button you can push?
I wish there were.
Okay, just kidding. Understood, understood. And we really appreciate all the hard work you've put into this for dang sure. A comment that one of the speakers raised that I was sympathetic to is, I'm wondering, in terms of the Clara Parkway project, Commissioner Vadoz did, did recite some, you know, some general guidelines that would guide the language going forward. I wonder if there's a way that you could provide some more specific language about what will be, what will be there, what will be replaced, just so that the public can have a sense of what's, what's going to be, what's going to be in there.
Mr. Chair, in working with the, the city attorney's office in response to another issue unrelated to the housing element or the negative declaration in this process directly, the city has considered certain language that is more direct in the fact that the Clara Parkway project has not been approved and, you know, it may or may not be constructed. As far as putting that out there for public review in changes to the draft housing element, to be clear, there is another public hearing on this before the City Council, and these materials, as amended in response to the commission's direction, will be available for public review, and there will be another opportunity for public comment at the City Council's hearing or in written comments submitted in advance of that public hearing on the draft housing element. I think what some of the uncomfortableness was related to was the 30-day public hearing on the negative declaration for the draft housing element. But that's standard procedure. The city needs time to evaluate those written comments, to prepare responses, and to ensure that they're adequately responding to the public's feedback. And if that's not the case, then staff needs to hear that from the commission so it can further refine the responses.
Okay, so just to clarify, the actual language that's going to be in the version before City Council will be available to the public for them to review and eventually comment on in the City Council hearing?
That's correct.
Awesome. Okay. Going through my bucket list. Okay, there was one, one final comment from the public that I thought was, was useful. And see how useful it is for the public to come and speak on this? Yeah, it's really useful for us. And I have a feeling I know the answer, which is that you guys' hands are tied. But it is interesting that the, what's driving this entire process is the need to satisfy the RHNA numbers. And it just seems like there's a disconnect with the fact that the, the city of Pacifica's population hasn't grown in the, I guess, the last 10-year period, it's actually shrunk. And yet we're, you know, we're required to come up with these additional areas for residential development. There just seems like a disconnect. But I have a feeling the answer is, well, we don't have any control of what ABAG gives us. Is that right?
To a certain extent. The statistics you see in here were part of a data package the city purchased from CCAG and that was developed based on various regional projections. The city does not have the capability to develop its own projections. These are quite complicated undertakings that rely on a lot of different mathematical formulations and data sources that city staff just doesn't have the time or resources to pursue on its own. And so this may be an anomaly based on the formula used for the region. I can't tell you exactly, it's complicated. And this process to develop the projections was undertaken several years ago now, probably three to four years ago by ABAG. And there was an opportunity for cities to comment on the projections, the draft projections at that time. That opportunity to appeal or to challenge them has long since passed. And so really, the city doesn't have a leg to stand on in terms of challenging them at this point, other than to refuse to adopt the housing element to incorporate the RENA, which has its own consequences, tends to be very expensive and painful for cities to do that because there was a process to challenge it. And I'm not aware that the city at that time, back in 2012 or 13, pursued a challenge. Dozens of cities do, and very, very few of them prevail against the ABAG projections.
Thank you, Christian, for those very helpful comments.
I can add a little bit more to that. So there's two data sets that I think were in question, both produced by ABAG. One is the projections, and they go through a process and send that out to the cities, and the cities have an opportunity to comment. The second is the RENA methodology. So the state gives the region what's called the big number. And then ABAG is, is responsible for allocating that number to all of the jurisdictions within the region. So they convene what's called the Methodology Committee, which is representatives from cities and counties throughout the region who come up, put their heads together, and figure out what's a fair, complicated math formula, taking into consideration your ability to provide affordable housing, your access to transit, and coming up with a fair allocation. And to complicate matters, there's an option for subregions. And Samatelle County did create a subregion. And so they have their own methodology that was done, and it needs to be approved by ABAG, but subregions can be created. So once this methodology is, you know, it's cranked out through the formula and you come up with your numbers, there's an entire appeals process and public hearing process that ABAG holds. So, you know, there was an opportunity for the city to participate in that, in that process.
Thank you for that explanation. So just to conclude my comments, I'm, I'm in favor of, of approval, forwarding this on to the City Council with our approval, with the caveats that I'm in favor of removing the discontinuances on 14 and 17, which are the, the Open Space Task Force Report and the, and the cohousing. Okay, but I'm very interested in hearing the other wishes of the commissioners. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, just to, just to clarify one thing, I don't know if I'm in complete agreement with the notion or the clarification, Christian, about the, that this approval of the housing element for certain parcels is not, doesn't weigh one way or another in factor, in factoring or in approving a housing project. I do think that the, when we list these projects, it's, it's absolutely considered an entitlement by the developer. I've seen it used as such in numerous lawsuits and permit approvals. You know, if we, if Lower Gypsy Hill is not approved for 24 units, you know, that opens up, my, my understanding, and I'd like counsel to correct me if I'm wrong, but that does open us up to a legal challenge. It seems like there's a lot of lawsuits I've seen based on that.
Well, I can't speak too specifically to that, but I mean, what I can say is that developers will certainly, or opponents of projects will certainly use the criteria or the land use inventories as indicia of what should or shouldn't be approved there. But it is, it's not an entitlement. It doesn't give any, by putting it in the housing element, there's no entitlement to developing any, any units on that site, but still go through the regular land use approval process. So I might say that it might be a bit of an overstatement to say it has no bearing, because I think it has, there's a factor that, in which it's considered by subsequent decision make, by decision makers in subsequent land use approval processes for that project, but it's not, it's far from conclusive and far from an entitlement.
No, I agree. And I, and I use the word entitlement, not in, in the strict legal sense, but there, there are a number of lawsuits that have been filed recently by developers who, when the city planning or city council does not approve their project, bring up the housing element as a, as a major claim in the lawsuits. And I, you know, when you list these houses, what you're absolutely saying, and I think it really, I think we really need to be clear, what we're doing tonight is, you know, by listing the Fish property or the Zebros property, or Lower Gypsy Hill, or any of these properties, what, what we're saying is, as a city, is not that these properties could be built there or developed there with this number of units, but that they should be. It is a city policy at this point. I think that just needs to be clear.
I would, if, if you still want to hear from me?
Yes, absolutely.
I would say, I would, I wouldn't say it stated as strongly as that, that they should be, that they, housing should be built there, but that it is an appropriate site for housing. And so that if an appropriate project came up that met the clarifications, to not approve it would be problematic. But to say it's, to say housing should be built there, I don't think has enough of the recognition of all the important processes that still need to be followed.
But, but it might serve as a, maybe a stop was too strong a word, but, but a statement that it certainly does comply with the general plan and zoning insofar as it's described.
For some, for some base determinations that, yes, it complied, that for the general plan purposes, it identifies it as a site that's appropriate for land use development. But that's already true, whether you've identified it in the housing element as an appropriate site, you're identifying it in the housing element as an appropriate site because there is the land use designation there, and there is the zoning there. So what you've done is you've gone and done the homework, and you say, yeah, we see, you know, lot at such and such address, and we see the general plan designation is appropriate for housing and a certain amount of development, and that whatever other ordinances or policies might be available. And so this is a site that makes sense. We've done some homework, we think this is a site that makes sense for some housing.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I kind of see it the opposite way. I see this, you know, we looked at a bunch, we looked at a lot of open space in the southern end of town, and that, that's, and that's an easy call, yes, we could put the housing there, when I think that, you know, we really would have benefited in, you know, Commissioner Gordon and I actually had this joint session with the City Council, where we really pushed hard to try to get North Palmetto looked at again for, you know, upzoning and some multi-use residential up there. And, you know, that's, that's the kind of, I really feel like we missed an opportunity to ask for some, some rezoning and get that done as part of this housing using element. You could put 200 units on North Palmetto and take off all this, you know, housing in the southern end of town, which links up, you know, which, which is absolutely going to require highway widening to accommodate. And, you know, that's why I guess I'm just so frustrated that we're sitting here at the 11th hour, where we could have done some really interesting things, and now what we're going to do, and absolutely, I think if you vote for this tonight, you are absolutely saying, yeah, let's, you know, we're going to give an entitlement of a, not a strict legal sense, to some of this open space development in this town, which I don't think has been 100% thought through.
Mr. Chair, if I may respond to some of the commissioners' comments, one important topic that the commission's not yet discussed is staff's presentation of alternative sites in response to the public comments and concerns about sites identified in the Open Space Task Force Report. Staff did present two different tables, one based on current general plan designations and one draft general plan designations or land use element designations. and one draft general plan designations or land use element designations, where we could remove from the housing inventory all of the sites identified for preservation in the Open Space Task Force report. And so I think for staff, it would be important to get a commission reading on that. Hopefully, that would satisfy some of the concerns of the public that has commented on this process, and it would be important for us to hear that.
Thank you for that comment. Commissioner Nebelen?
No, I already spoke. Thank you.
Okay. Does the commission wish to take up Christian Hackenberg's?
That would be an attachment I, where the two tables are compared with open space candidates and potential alternative sites that would still allow the city to accommodate its RENA, but to hopefully remove some of the, some of the concerns about these sites.
You might need to walk us through, what page are you?
It's very far in the back. It's attachment I. I'm not sure that it has a page number.
Okay.
But it's maybe three pages before the end of the packet.
Table four?
Right. There's a table four, a table five, a table six, and a table seven.
Okay. And you would like us to, say that again, what you want us to do?
Sure. So there were comments that came in during the public comment period about the city, it's inappropriate to include in the land inventory table sites that are identified for open space preservation. It was seen as a conflict of priorities, which seemed reasonable enough to speak to and to address. And so staff identified sites that were in the current inventory that were also in the Open Space Task Force report as identified candidates for preservation.
And that's table four?
And that's table four.
Okay.
And that's based, that's related to table 3-1 in the draft housing element that identifies sites based on the current general plan, land use designation. And it proposes alternatives, A-1, A-2, and A-3. So for those without the table?
On table five?
Yes.
Okay.
So for those without the table, the sites that are currently included in the land inventory are the Fish, Lower Gypsy Hill, Zebros, San Pedro Road, and Hillside Meadows. And for the record, the Bull site is not included in any of the land inventories and has not been in any of the drafts of this document. And table five proposes to swap for those sites 2212 Beach Boulevard, Pacific Manor Shopping Center, and 575 Cresby Drive. And that would allow 128 units in place of the 116 units currently identified in open space candidate sites. And then whenever the commission's ready, there are alternative sites for table 3-2 as well.
Those seem like reasonable alternatives. I'm just, I guess, I'm curious why, why we went with table, why we went with table four instead of table, the properties in table four instead of table five?
Probably no better reason than inertia, to be honest. They were included in the previous housing element, and they had been adopted, and so why change the sites if they had been adopted? But during this process, additional concerns were identified, and so staff wants to respond to those and give the commission the opportunity to propose alternatives that would remove those other sites from the land inventory.
Those are reasonable. Do we need to consider ourselves with table six and seven at this time, or no?
Not necessarily. The concept is the same. The sites are largely the same. The Fish, Zebros, 570 Cresby, Hillside Meadows.
Okay, that's, I understand, I understand. Okay. So what's on the table is whether we swap out the parcels in, the sites in table four for the sites in table five?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving the sites in table four from the land inventory and replacing them with the sites in table five.
Okay. Do I see any lights for discussions by Commissioner Cooper?
I was going to make a motion.
Commissioner Cooper?
I was going to make a motion if anybody has any other. All right, I'm going to make a motion that's the move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending to city council the adoption of both the negative declaration prepared for the general plan amendment GPA-90-15 and the draft housing element of the general plan for the period 2015 to 2020 described in GPA-90-15 and incorporating all testimony and documents into the record by reference. With the removal of the reference and removal of the action plan 417, and to reinstate those two action programs, number 14 relates to open space and program number 17 relating to the shared living community, and adopt table five as the identified sites within the proposal.
In place of table four?
In place of table four.
So how does that sound to you guys as a motion? Was that clear enough?
It's largely adequate for our purposes, but I would ask for clarification. Are we also swapping tables six and seven, which are based on the draft general plan land use designations? And then second question, would the maker of the motion entertain including action programs 14 and 17 of the current housing element as ongoing policies instead of action programs? It's difficult for staff to justify them as action programs. We have to report on our progress with them. They have to have a timeline for accomplishments and a specific number of persons benefited, and that's difficult to do given their intangible nature, if you will. So it would state, it would put the city on record in the housing element as an ongoing policy for housing development to include action programs number 14 and number 17.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and remove my motion so we can talk about whether or not there should be an action plan or whether or not it should be an ongoing policy.
Just to, I'll jump in here. So before we get to that issue, I think it's reasonable to follow what we were suggesting in terms of swapping out five for four and do the same thing, seven for six. As I understand it, the same, it's the same principle, right?
That's right.
Exact same principle, okay. So that sounds very reasonable to me.
I want to make a motion, but I want to talk about the action plan.
Absolutely. Do I see it like Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, let's like to get my fellow commissioners', you know, guidance on whether or not they think it should be a policy or an action plan.
As I understand it from, from what the planning staff was saying, Christian, I always want to call you Christian Hackenberg. That's not your last name, is it?
It is not my last name.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. Christian, what Christian was saying, well, so can you say it again a little slower?
Of course. I'm happy to always re-explain because I want to make sure everyone gets the message I'm trying to convey. In the past, housing elements often would contain a variety of what were more aspirational statements than discrete action programs, steps that cities would take on a definite timeline to benefit definite persons. And so the state, a few years ago, changed state law and added some additional requirements for action programs, specifically requiring a definite impact during the planning period. And so to take what I perceive as aspirational statements like, or not aspirational statements, but non-discrete activities without a definite impact on a definite timeframe, such as checking the Open Space Task Force report when development applications are submitted, or pursuing or supporting cohousing, those are a little bit nebulous to define as an action program, which the city then, in the next housing element and in its annual status reports, needs to report on the progress towards achieving. And so if we don't have-
Excuse me, and previously, they were action plans?
They were previously action programs, which met the legal requirement back when the housing element was adopted, but no longer meets the requirement, in my opinion. And so it's no less important and no less impactful to include them as an ongoing policy. It just says that we can't get our hands around what the defined population is that will be benefited, and in what timeline during the planning period they will receive that benefit.
Is there any difference in terms of the obligation, you know, if we call it an action program versus a, an ongoing or a policy? I mean, in terms of the obligation to actually comply and conform?
Not in my opinion, Commissioner. The change in obligation is the reporting to the state.
Okay, so it's more of a staff, it's a difference in what the staff needs to do, but not a difference in terms of how a project would be treated, for example?
That's correct. So staff would continue to be obligated to look at the ongoing policies, just as it is with all general plan policies, and to attempt to implement them to the extent possible and to balance any competing priorities. And so to put it as an ongoing policy is a very appropriate place in my mind, and is in line with state law, as I understand it, and would put the commission on record as supporting both of those former action programs, continuing forward in a more appropriate form.
Commissioner Campbell?
Just a question for council. What's our legal vulnerability of an action program versus a policy?
I can't answer that at this time, so I apologize. I don't know offhand what the legal vulnerability would be, other than to say-
Like the, the state housing department probably wouldn't, I mean, do they come, do they look on this disfavorably of an action plan?
It's, I understand it would be more when it comes around to the review period for the housing element, as to how they would see to what extent the city has implemented the housing element that had been adopted. I don't know if Christian or, do you have any follow-up on that?
Commissioner, I'm not aware of a particular legal vulnerability. I mean, if the city were outright disregarding its housing element in every one of its actions, that may be a different statement, where the city's operating, you know, not in conformance, clearly not in conformance with an element of its general plan, to go to the level of a particular ongoing policy. I think as long as the city's making a good faith effort to balance that among the other policies of the other elements of the general plan, that's consistent with everyday practice. I can't, I'm not aware, and it doesn't sound like council can think of something that comes to mind of a particular legal vulnerability for including this in one format versus another.
No, I'm just wondering why, why change it, I guess.
Well, what I heard is why change it to a policy is to make sure that the city can actually, staff can actually implement the policy without doing reporting obligations that aren't really fitting for what the policy is.
And, I mean, has, has the reporting obligations, I mean, have, has there been criticism, I guess, from the housing department on the reporting obligations associated with this thus far over the years, or, you know, has there any, been any criticism of our performance?
I've not received any direct feedback, nor am I aware of any, but this, this change went into effect in the midst of the last housing element. And so in order to allow cities an opportunity to revise and put their action programs in the proper form, it would seem reasonable to me to not be overly critical of cities that had inappropriate action programs in the past. I can't speak to what the state will do moving forward, but I think it's in our best interest to put action programs in place with our understanding of the law and the requirements for reporting and specific benefits on a specific timeframe moving forward.
I'm, I'll just jump in. I'm comfortable with following Christian's recommendation of making them policies as opposed to whatever the other thing was. Commissioner Cooper?
I just have one more question. So the rest of the action plans that we have within this, this housing document, are those, are we considering potentially moving those to more of a policy decision than an action plan? Is that would be the next update?
Not exactly. So the action programs you see proposed in this draft housing element, I did my best to reduce those to the number that really have a defined impact in a defined time period. And so where you'll see two changes from the previous housing element was, I proposed a number of action programs become ongoing policies, and then a smaller number perhaps become or be recommended for discontinuance, among them number 14 and 17, that were topics of discussion this evening. So where the commission feels it's appropriate to continue one as an action program, or to make it an ongoing policy, or to discontinue it, that's the feedback staff needs.
Okay. Well, I'd go ahead and make a motion for approval then. I'll move that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending city council adopt, adoption of both the negative declaration preparing for the general plan amendment GPA-90-15 and the draft housing element of the general plan for the period 2015 to 2023 describing in GPA-90-15 and incorporating all testimony and documents into the record by reference with the adoption and removal of the action programs 14 and 17, and adding and reinstating the action plans 14 and 17 as ongoing policies, as well as swapping tables five to four and seven to six.
Does that sound, is that clear enough for you guys?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Do I see a second? Commissioner Nebelen?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion passes four votes yea and one vote nay.
Thank you.
Anyone agree with by the action of the Planning Commission, there's 10 calendar days to appeal it. Does that apply here, since it's going right to the city council?
No, but it would apply to the first item.
Which, I already said that. All right, I covered it. Okay. We're on to number, agenda item number three?
Yes, we're recommending that that item be continued to the, to the next regular planning commission meeting.
That's great.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have to make a motion on that, or can we just?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Vadois?
I move that we table item three until the next meeting.
Commissioner Cooper?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion passes 5-0. Great. We are going on to communications section of our meeting, commission communications. I do not see any lights. Staff communications.
I do not have any, except that I would be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge Commissioner Campbell's frustration in the timeline with the housing element. So we are where we are now, and so, but I do want to just say that I'm acknowledging that as we move forward in the future with our programs.
And I'd like to note that I know that a lot of that is beyond your control, and I apologize for my frustration directed at the staff.
Understood.
Great. Okay. Moving on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. And we've got a number of cards. So we'll go Julie Lancel, then Tom Clifford, then Ron Mako. If anybody else wants to speak, just fill out a card and, there you go.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, I am coming before you about something that's happened in my neighborhood in Valmar that I am concerned about. Let's see, I'm kind of delirious after the, I apologize. Where's my, where's, where are my notes? Where am I here? Well, apparent, there's been some grading that took place in Valmar on the north side, where the one house is on the 24-acre parcel. There was grading that took place there. I noticed it when I was walking on Friday, and I was up on Keith, and I was able to see across the valley, and there was this huge swath of just dirt, like everything, there was all dirt along a slope. And I, I found out that the, I called, well, I called the planning department, and I asked if, and I, oh, and there were bulldozers going back and forth. Sorry, I left out a very important element. There were bulldozers going back and forth behind the house that's there, up on the hillside, and plus, there was a lot of what seemed to be earth that had been removed from the side of the hill. And I called the planning department just to inquire, and it turns out that there was no grading permit for that work. And so I just want to read a couple of things from the code. No grading shall be performed without first having obtained a permit from the building official. And incidentally, a grading permit does not include construction of retaining walls or other things. No person shall occupy or maintain unpermitted grading for the purposes of this section. Unpermitted grading shall be defined as land that has been excavated, cut, filled, graded, compacted, or terraced at any point by any person without the required permits. Anyway, I don't have to read these code sections to you. I'm happy to share them. There are just a few of them, but, and if it has been unpermitted, there is a methodology for following up after the fact and trying to get, make sure things are straightened out. But in any event, the only information I have is that the neighbor next to the property did tell someone that there, the owner had told her that there had been a landslide there, and, and that that's what he was doing. But I think that even if there was a landslide there, they would report it and get a permit in order to do the remediation on the hillside. So I'm very- So I'm very concerned. I have a picture of it and took it on my iPhone. The only way you can really see it is by being up on Keith and looking across the valley. It's very hard to see because of the brush and everything that's, oh, I'm going over. My apologies. The brush obscures your view from the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Tom Clifford?
And I'm tired and I'm going to just sit back down.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I figured since I was here, I might as well make the most of it. Anyway, I just wanted to point out that I appreciate what you're doing and them bringing this to you guys. I don't know who was the inspiration for having you guys, you know, get this to, out to the public on this housing element in the Open Space Task Force report. I just want to point out, the city in the past has really lost a lot of money and polarized the community and violated the public trust on, on, on things that should have went before the Planning Commission. One of the issues was Peter Headlands Road, which probably some of you are aware of, that attempted trail that they're still working on and it's going to cost the city a lot of money. But that was a situation where the city actually violated the Coastal Act and the Public Works Department anyway, and they cut down a number of heritage trees on private property without heritage street permits, nice big beautiful pines and didn't engineer the project and so they resulted in some slides and whatnot and have you. But it was one of several projects should have gone before the Planning Commission, you know. And the other one, of course, the biodiesel, which cost the city a considerable amount of money and part of that being, you know, premature development took place with building a pad that was going to house the biodiesel facility. But I just think it's kind of ironic right now that they're storing an old railroad car there on top of that pad. Railroad car from a steam engine that was supposed to be a biodiesel oil refinery. But that, that's a project that should have gone before the Planning Commission as well, I felt. And I think if they had been slowed down and put the brakes on a little bit, the city wouldn't have lost money on that and polarized the community either. But I just want to point that out to the new planning department, you know, just really be, be discreet, you know, bring things before the public and so it doesn't result in violation of the public trust and so on. That's it. Thank you much.
And before we adjourn, I failed to mention that.
Okay, we've got one more speaker. That's okay. Leo? Leo Leon?
Thank you, commissioners. Being here really brought back memories for me, many years up there with fellow commissioners. I just wanted to reinforce the importance of having an active, ongoing Planning Commission. I urge you to revisit your bylaws and become familiar with them, discuss them, have a study session on them. We have a lot of business, I left in 2012, there's business that we agreed to do in 2012 that's never been done, that staff had said they were going to help us get done. One of those was visiting prior approved projects to see how they were, how they were doing, if they met our expectations, if they're, if they, anything we can learn from visiting these projects. I think that's still a worthy pursuit. Another thing we were going to do was explore all the latest schematics for recycled wastewater to promote our approval of conditions for projects where they could possibly do double plumbing to reduce water use of freshwater. You know, the bottom line, you know, there's no sense in, I don't know what the buzzword was to fast track things that aren't done properly or out in the open. And I just urging you as planning commissioners, and I had this conversation with Tina, I'll tell it, I said, I asked Tina to work, you two, you were just griping your overwork. I really think that the work is out there, you're needed, and we need to find ways to get that done. I think one way to do it is to look at your bylaws and there's a lot of things you could be working on, and there's a lot of things, if you don't know what to do, I'll be glad to give you a list. But I know that you're all real dedicated and brilliant folks, so, you know, get with it. I think Tina and the conversations I had and with Christian as well, I feel we have a good staff to work with. So, good luck, good seeing you. We'll be seeing you down the road.
Thanks, Leo. You had something you want to say?
I, I wanted to let you know that the two items that you heard last Planning Commission meeting, two weeks ago, were both appealed. So those have not been scheduled yet, but those would be coming before the city council.
Can you remind us what those were?
They were the, the project on the 4,000 block of Palmetto as well as Harmony Lot Two.
Thank you. Do I see a motion? Commissioner Cooper?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Vadois?
Second.
We have a motion, please vote. That motion passes unanimously five to zero. Thank you all for coming out. Good night.
Good to see you all.